Hi Jim.
Hi everybody.
Hello.
Hey Jim.
Another Monday night at the movies.
Brady Bunch.
That's it.
Any volunteer on invocation? Jim, Brenda, you guys want to give an invocation?
Hold on.
Let me know so I can let Mayor know.
Hard time hearing your mayor.
Can you hear me better now?
Absolutely.
Alright. Jim, do you want to give an invocation here in a minute?
Oh, I can do that, yes.
Alright. Is everybody here and everybody ready?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
We have the city manager with us, Mark in here.
There he is.
Very good. Well, we will now call this city council meeting to order for May the 11th, 2020. Please rise to the invocation and pledge of allegiance, but the invocation be given by Councilman Jim Bernard.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for being with us today and thank you for your love. Please surround us and protect us and all those that are around us. Please bring us through these hard times that we're trying to deal with, make sure that we bring the correct decisions that are your word, dear Lord, that we do your wishes and that we keep everybody safe, whether it's here, the military, or schools coming up, or those in the hospitals. Just please keep us all safe, dear Lord. Please be with us and thank you for your love and we do this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock? Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Can you guys hear me okay, better than last time?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I can hear you.
Okay.
Okay. First up, under resolutions, we have Resolution 2020-01. Stand emergency.
I'll make a motion that we extend the state of emergency through Resolution 2020-01.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
I'm just wondering how much longer it's going to be.
Well, I was just going to say that. Right now, we don't know. But so long as Phase 1 of the recovery, Governor's recovery, is proceeding forward, we can have it. Once Phase 2 gets there, as I mentioned in email that I sent earlier, that so far, the committee, the reopening committee that the Governor has appointed, has recommended against virtual meetings in Phase 2. That's not to say that we can't, some members can't attend virtually under the old rules that we discussed, whether it's sick or concerned about health issues. But that'd be a physical forum at City Hall unless the Governor decides not to adopt our recommendations.
In either case, you don't see any issue with continuing this, at least until our next meeting?
We're fine right now until they go to Phase 2.
Okay. Very good. Is there any further questions on 2020-01?
Yeah, just a technical one. If and when we end up going back to council chambers, would we still be able to do the Zoom for the residents that don't want to come and participate in a crowded room? Not that we have crowded rooms.
Yeah. Good idea. Yes.
I don't see why we couldn't.
Okay.
I wanted to point one other thing out. This resolution has already been passed. What you're doing basically is approving the city manager's extension, which he's been doing as required. It's just your review of his extensions.
Very good.
So I just have one more question. Go ahead Stanley, I'm sorry.
I don't have a problem with Mark or this or whatever. The county commissioners meeting, how are they carrying out, how is Hardy County carrying out there? How are they doing that Jerry? Why can't we not do that back in our chambers and they're doing it in theirs?
They're back in their chambers?
Hardy County did it. I'm not speaking for Hollis County, I don't know. I don't know that we ever moved out of ours in Hollis County. I don't know that to be a fact. I don't know.
Well, I think they did. On how many people you have attend, because the Governor's order really applies to 10 people or more.
Well, we moved it. Okay, never mind. Okay, I'm fine. I'll get more information before I run. Thank you.
And then one last question I wanted to ask the city manager. From the items A through H of all of those elements that are allowed under the emergency, have any of those been needed?
I'm going through. Yeah, I am. I'm just looking back through them. No. Anything else Maria?
No, sir.
Alright. If there's no further questions on the Resolution 2020-01, well, now call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Resolution 2020-04, restaurant outside dining. Terry, you want to read this?
Yeah, this is a resolution of the City of Avon Park, Florida, providing restaurants authority, provide temporary outside seating under certain conditions during the COVID-19 emergency, provide for servability, conflicts, and provide an effective date. So I put this together as one of our council. And I've been in contact with DOT with regard to allowing restaurants to use the sidewalks, which really are theirs, on Main Street. And they seem amenable to that, but we need, they need to get information on it right now. And we're in the process of gathering that information. I guess Mark's putting that together. And the, but this is the ordinance or the resolution that would allow that to occur. It still can occur, I mean on property where they receive permission by the owner. Now, so the parking lots, you know, they own themselves, or their landlord owns them and they can get the permission from the landlord. Sidewalks on the Main Street area is, as I mentioned, DOT. I think there's a parking lot that somebody mentioned that was a city parking lot, which, you know, obviously they can request a view, as long as it's adjacent to their place. Down the street or table, but that's up to you. This is, that's all in here. It has a lot of restrictions to it, but some of these restrictions, DOT immediately asked me if we had. So it's nice to be able to say we did. So.
Okay.
I think this is a good idea, mainly because right now our LDRs don't allow outside dining, even with businesses that are on sidewalks that face Main Street. And if it ends up being that people like it, maybe later on we can change the LDR to accommodate this type of business, or at least outside. I know in the summertime it'll be blazing hot. But maybe on, you know, cooler evenings, they could do this out on the sidewalk, which just shows a level of activity and we are, that we're okay, that we're, you know. And anyway, of the restaurants that I've spoken to, they're all excited about doing something like this. And a lot of them don't have a lot of parking. And so their only concern was liability in terms of using parking that's owned by the city, for example, the Depot Restaurant. But nonetheless, it would give them an opportunity to have that outside dining, since the inside is only at 25%. And when they go to 50%, they're still going to be needing more seating. So it'll be up to the city manager to arrange those types of things with those businesses, as long as the DOT is okay with it on the cities, I'm sorry, on the state-owned side. And if the city is agreeable, we could do it on our parking lots.
Well, I see there's two sunset provisions in here. One is with the termination of Resolution 2020-01, which more than likely will be coming up soon. And then you also have July 31st as another date. So I kind of agree with you that it's a good trial run. And we'll see how it goes. And if it works out well, then maybe we can consider it in the future.
I agree.
Is there any, go ahead.
Plus, right now, it's also an option for people to sit outside and wait while the food that they're ordered. They might feel safer waiting outside than being inside with the other 25%.
Right. Do we have a motion on Resolution 2020-04?
I'll make a, go ahead Jim, you can have it.
Alright. I'm making a motion to approve Resolution 2020-04, restaurant outside dining. Item number B5.
Is there a second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
I sent this to DOT as one of pieces of information. And I haven't heard back from them, but it's been several days, so I assume they had a serious problem with it. They would have said something. So, but you know, just in case, I just wanted to let you know that they have a problem. We'll just have to redo it, since it only takes one reading anyway.
Okay. Very good. Under consent agenda, we have the minutes from April 27th, 2020. Looking for a motion?
Brenda, I move that we approve the consent agenda, minutes from April 27th, 2020, identified in IMC 6.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions on the minutes or corrections?
Just one question. I guess this goes to Jerry. In addition, the addition to agenda, we had a motion to use a CARES grant, the FAA CARE. That is, the CARES grant, I'm sorry, the resolution that we are paying off a portion of that loan is Resolution 1213. Do you need, or do we need another resolution to use those funds to affect that existing resolution? I mean, do you need a resolution to change a resolution?
Well, yeah, you need a resolution to change a resolution, just like you need ordinance to change an ordinance. But it, you know.
I'm sorry Jerry, what was that last part?
I said, it's a matter of how significant the change is. If it's like a clerical error, you know, scrivener's error, then it doesn't really require that.
Okay. Maria, where were you going with that? Is there?
Well, we're changing the term because we're paying off a portion of it early and it's going to shorten the term by maybe a year or two years.
And you should probably pass a proper resolution. Just, it's just a resolution. You don't amend a resolution necessarily. What you do is you just simply have a new resolution. And in that resolution, you withdraw the old one.
Okay.
Okay. Can we have that done?
Sure.
Very good.
But I just wanted to ask, the original one be sent to me, since I didn't do it.
Okay.
And word, if possible. That'll save time.
Okay. Kim, did you get that?
No. Say it again, please.
I got it. Very good. We have a motion and a second on the minutes. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
So we have first reading of ordinance 02-2020 for fire prevention. Jerry, if you'll read it.
Yes. An ordinance of the City of Avon Park, permitting Chapter 50 Fire Protection, Article 2, Fire Department, Division 2, Firefighter Retirement System of the Code of Order System of the City of Avon Park. Section 50 through 56, benefit amounts and eligibility. To provide the monthly benefit amount shall be 3 and 16, 100% of the average final compensation for each year of credit service, regardless of date of hire, providing for codification, providing for several provisions, repeating all ordinance and conflict here with, and providing effective date. First of all, let me say that I don't think you need codification of this. You guys probably have to. Is this in the code?
It's in the CBA.
Yeah, part of the contract.
Yeah, but if it's not in the code, you don't need, the provision, the part of this it says, provide for codification.
I think it's in the code.
I think it is as well.
Okay, don't know. The second thing is, I did not review this and it says attorney review. When I saw this, I thought initially that this was done by our retirement council out of Miami. I don't know, you know, whether he reviewed it or some other attorney reviewed. It wasn't me.
Okay. Well, we have Chief Marcy with us to brief us on this ordinance, if you will.
Yep. So this is the, back in December, you guys voted on the collective bargaining agreement between the union and the city. This is just to get basically the finalized part of that, part of that agreement, which was the multiplier for retirement. So this is the ordinance that needs to be done to change those other people. We had a few hirees, what they call the two-tier system. They were at a different multiplier than everybody else. So in that negotiations, the city and the union agreed to remove that two-tier system. And this is the ordinance to just say, it doesn't matter when you're hired, everybody's at 3.16.
Okay. Do we have questions for the chief on this?
I do. What attorney reviewed this?
I honestly don't know. This was sent from Carol.
It came from the fire pension board.
So I would say the pension attorney.
Oh, yeah, probably.
A pension attorney doesn't really represent you. You might want to consider having, you know, either Brian Koji review it, or your guy that normally uses out of Miami. I'll look up his name.
Okay. Andy, do you have an opinion on which attorney?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Also, I just want to, I just want to clear something up, because Jerry's right. I had somebody new helping with the agenda. And they put yes on everything and I didn't get a chance to look at it before she sent them out. So that was my, that was my bad. But I am going to go back in and fix those and then for the record copy, it will be fixed. And that will be what we will have in our system on our shared drive. So I apologize for that, but I'll take care of it. It's on several of them.
Okay. I guess I will add this into Garrett. Brian Koji knows a little about it. You know, he was part of negotiations. So he might have a little, a little angle on it than the guy from Miami, whoever he is, but it shouldn't really matter.
Okay.
Would it be, would it be wrong, I'm sorry, would it be wrong just to approve the ordinance pending the review of Brian Koji, since there is another second reading anyway?
Subject to review by council.
That makes good sense to me.
Okay. Does anyone care to make that motion?
Okay, I just.
Go ahead Maria.
To approve ordinance 02-2020 pending review by alternate council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions on?
Well, I just, I'm sending the name over to them now and I just wanted to comment. It doesn't look to me like there's like spectacular changes. It's probably something fairly simple that can be done. It's just that, you know, for insurance purposes, I can't go into an area that we had somebody who's working as an expert.
Jerry, are you opposed to using on this?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Alright, is any of the council opposed to using Brian Koji on this?
No.
Okay.
He was there during the contract, makes sense.
Yeah.
Even if he doesn't do ordinances and punts it back to Jerry, can he just also say that if Koji doesn't do it, that they find someone that will?
Yeah. Of course. Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further questions on this? And we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes, I said, yes.
I'm sorry, didn't hear you. Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Very good. Moving on to item number eight. Was this pulled or is this still on?
This is industrial, we pulled this, time being.
Okay.
Well, I pulled this and I'm making a bunch, just the people at Nucor had some problems with the issues that they're not getting everything they want. But most of the changes I'm making are other things. But the engineers are, they have problems with some of the engineering decisions in it. So we're pulling it and we're going to submit it probably for reading later on, maybe next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to Eric from Nucor today and he said he had no problem with this as it is.
Well, that's.
Don't worry about it Jerry.
That's not what their letter said. They had, they had sent a letter, I guess, that they really had a huge problem with it. But at any rate, we had, as I mentioned before, and I didn't mention this before, that we had some changes. We want to get something in place. But it's not a mad emergency. I just, I just was, I guess, it was a problem because you guys had nothing really to speak of for industrial wastewater regulation in your code before. So we're trying to get something in place and then we were going to, it's going to be an amendment process.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Well, item number nine. We have the public hearing for second reading of ordinance 06-2020. It's a budget amendment for airport equipment.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 06-2020, budget amendment for airport equipment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is going to be a public hearing, so we'll now open it up to the public if anyone wishes to comment on this. Kim, do you see anyone's hand up or anything?
No hands.
Okay. Giving no comment, we'll now close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. We have a motion and a second. Is there any questions on this? Seeing none, we will call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson? Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Item number 10, we have discussion of Lake Bird lift station proposal.
Do you not have a second rating for the stormwater? That wasn't.
That was pulled for the time being, Kim.
Yeah, I knew the.
Can I say something about the stormwater?
Yes, Robert.
Just a minute, Robert.
Stormwater order.
One second guys, hold on, one second. Kim, what are you doing there?
I know the industrial wastewater was pulled, but stormwater wasn't, was it Jerry?
I didn't know that stormwater was pulled.
It was industrial wastewater that was pulled.
Right.
We've got to pass the stormwater. We're on a deadline.
Okay.
Sorry.
Industrial wastewater.
Industrial wastewater was pulled, stormwater.
Okay. Alright, we'll go back to item number eight.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion on ordinance 4-2020?
It's show title. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Avon Park, Florida, Chapter 98, Article 3, Division 5, of the City of Avon Park Code, to delete surplus stormwater regulation provision and adding to Article 4 of Chapter 98 entitled Stormwater Management, providing for definitions, providing for prohibitions, providing for discharges due to industrial activity or construction activity, providing for requirement to prevent, control, or reduce non-stormwater discharges adhered to state water quality standards, providing for notification of discharge, providing for enforcement of illicit discharge, providing for field of conflicting provisions, providing for inclusion in code, conflicting codes, ordinances, and resolutions, providing for servability, providing for scrivener's error, providing an effective date.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the second reading? Ordinance 4-2020.
Making a motion to approve ordinance 04-2020, stormwater drainage, item number D8.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. This is the second reading, so we'll have a public hearing. Public hearing is now open for ordinance 4. Anyone wishing to speak from the public can now do so.
Bring your hand. Eric Larmour?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Eric Larmour, 22 Nucor Drive, Nucor. I wasn't going to comment on the stormwater. I was just raising our hand in regards to the industrial stormwater. Yeah, I mean, we do have some concerns and we'll be happy to talk about them later. But that's what I was referring to, not this ordinance.
Okay, that's what I, okay.
Thank you Eric.
Thanks.
Eric, is anyone else from the public wishing to speak?
No hands.
I'm sorry, what was that?
No hands.
Okay. The public hearing for ordinance 4-2020 is now closed. Bring it back to the councils. Council have any further questions or comments on ordinance 4, 2020? Then we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock? Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Robert, did you have anything that you needed to add?
No, sir. I just want to make sure it got passed because that's part of our stormwater permit that needed to be passed. We can continue with that.
Very good. Item number 10, discussion of Lake Bird lift station proposal. Does one of the staff want to brief us on this? I know that we have Mr. Cool here.
Yes, and I've spoken with Mr. Two Roger and Carl has done a report on that for us. And it's included in the packets. But I talked to Mr. Two Roger and he understands that the report has come in under what he was asking on his proposal. He said that he would like for council to consider the fact that there's, you know, several years that we didn't pay and stuff like that. But at this time, I would like to let Carl explain or answer any questions that you have, because Mr. Two Roger is going to meet virtually with Mark and I later this week. So we would probably like to bring this back to another meeting. But I'm here to speak on it if anybody has any questions.
Carl, are you there?
I am here.
Okay.
Carl is on, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Would you be willing to give us a brief overview of what exactly we're looking at here?
Yes, sir. You've got a copy of my April 6, 2002 report. Kim asked me to look at the lift station and give to you my opinion as to the value, the current value of the lift station. At the end, noticed it's a very different, smaller number than what was being asked. Way I did it was, I went and looked at the lift station. I got with Rick, we went out and looked at it. I talked with him about how it was working. I was able to go to the county engineer's office and get a full set of drawings. I was able to go to the county engineer's office and get a full set of drawings of the lift station. The lift station is a very well-designed lift station, designed by Castane. It has the light pumps in it, which are the city standard. It's designed very much like the brand-new lift station that's being built right now up on Sunpure. And so, we had some real numbers to, to evaluate the two lift stations. The one at Lake Bird is a little smaller. It's 14 years old, it's only 12 and a half feet deep. One on Sunpure, 16 feet deep. The Lake Bird lift station has 10 horsepower pumps. The ones that's being, on Sunpure Road, has 35 horsepower pumps. Both of them have two pumps. The inside diameter of the Lake Bird station is six foot in diameter and the one on Lake, Sunpure Road is eight foot in diameter. The one at Sunpure has a generator, backup generator with automatic transfer. The one on Lake Bird does not have a backup generator. What I did was, I had the item-by-item prices on the bid that the city received from Metro Equipment Services on Sunpure. And so, I was able to go item-by-item to come up with a today's cost price of each item, pumps, wet well and all. Then I noted that the lift station in Lake Bird is 14 years old. And so, I did a straight-line depreciation, using concrete wet well as a lifespan of 50 years, motors and controls, giving them an average lifespan of 20 years, valves 20 years. So, I depreciated those items on the Lake Bird lift station down to 10 years. That's there, that's been in place and it's used. And came up with a evaluation, my opinion, of that station of $77,673. I then looked at the eight-inch force main and it's good that you have a eight-inch force main as a part of the project, so we know what the current cost of those are. That's $32 a foot and that's what we use. And he has 3,347 feet of that in the ground now. And then, I used a lifespan estimate of PVC pipe of 100 years, so reduced the value of that by 14%, coming up to a value with the force main of $92,109. Adding them together comes to $169,782. That's my opinion of the lift station. I would say that it is a good lift station, it was well-designed, it's doing a good job. And looking at it, if it becomes a city-owned lift station, it should be a good lift station for some long time. The city has been maintaining this lift station for some long time, so you kept it in good shape. The one issue you may wanna consider is that when you have a chance, it would be good that this lift station have a backup generator, so if we have an extended power outage, that lift station could, could continue to operate without bringing in pumps and, and backup equipment.
Okay. Very good.
I thought he did a very good valuation of that. I think he was more than fair.
How much would the backup generator cost?
Installing, you got, so you can't just put a backup there. It'll be, I'm gonna guess, in the neighborhood of $50,000. It's a large number.
Yeah, that's the...
Okay. Now, do we have any other questions about this lift station?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
As, you know, the, the contract is quite extensive and I'll be honest, you know, there's a lot of technical stuff in there that, you know, is not my forte. Did we request that Mr. Two Roger upgrade the lift station at any point in the past where he had to pay for, you know, upgrades that we wanted him to do? Or did he build it, did he build it to any kind of specification for the city? In order to have this contract?
That, that'll be a good question for Mark and I to talk to him about this week, because I don't know the answer, I'm sure Mark doesn't either. But we can ask him and I think there was a scope of work at some point that hopefully we put our hands on and accept that.
As I recall, they did, they did request that he upgrade the size of that lift station to serve others. Now, you know, there was supposed to be just, we were supposed to just pay for the upsizing of the water main and, and the lift station and force main. But the, I, I don't understand what he's talking about as far as payments. Unless we, we didn't, those, those, that payment was supposed to come from people hooked on to the system within the period of time the contract was in place. As I recall, you have all extended the contract till, I think it's 26 or something, 25 or 26, 2026 or 25. And, you know, but it's not from us, it's from people that connect. And they're supposed to pay us. Now, if somebody connected and we didn't pay him, that's something we have to look into about. But the, the list of payments that he's showing there are lists of payments from, that if somebody hooked up on such and such a date, that's what it would be when you consider the administrative costs that he built in, which I didn't agree with, but that was whoever was in charge at the time. Because I've never, I've never put administrative costs or interest into any reimbursement agreement, but somebody agreed to it, so.
Okay. Very good. So, is anyone opposed to offering Mr. Two Roger the sum of $169,782?
Well, I'd like to know, are we connecting this to anything else right now? Or is it a redundant system that was, you know, predominantly built for his development? We know that. You know, but is it obsolete in the sense that we don't need it? Do we, you know, is Nucor hooked into this? Is the church hooked into this? Is there any plan to where anything that we have in the future is gonna need this?
The only thing I know about a nursing home or something connected to it?
Can I, can I speak for a minute? This is Rick.
Okay, go ahead.
Currently, we have Banyan Woods going to that lift station and that is, that is our lift station that we maintain. There's a small store that has a small lift station that is going to that lift station and there is a assistant place right around the corner. I'm sorry, I can't remember the name, bear with me on that. And they have a lift station that also goes to that. Prior, there used to be a wastewater plant there and from what I understand, the deal was that this gentleman built this lift station and he charged us, his words, for the sewers that we sent through his. And that is what he is saying that we owe him for. I don't know if there's an agreement made on that, but yes, we are currently using his lift station to repump three of our lift stations through his eight-inch force main at this time.
That's actually... They, I just wanna cut in for a second, if you don't mind. It absolutely was never the intent that we would pay him for pumping our sewage. He's supposed to have turned this lift station over to us as our property and then in exchange, we are supposed to give him anybody that connects it up to his hydraulic shares for his subdivision. So, if you do buy it, make sure you exclude any capacity for this, his subdivision, 'cause they're gonna have to connect and pay their portion at some point.
Okay.
Okay. Maria, did that answer your question?
Well, kind of yes and kind of no. If there's a, a property in between any of these that he currently has hooked in, okay, he, he sold us the water part, that is ours, right? There was a water and then there was also sewer that he did. Am I correct to say that we bought the potable water system? Or that, that whatever was installed there is now ours? We did buy that?
Yeah, we bought the, the potable water system, 'cause he made an outrageous claim back several years ago and Julian decided that he won some things from, from him on top of that. So, he made, he basically agreed to purchase the water system for a lower, much lower, much, much lower price, you know, saying that we had to buy it for. Same thing, he thought he was owed much more in money than what we, what we agreed to, obviously. But I, I don't recall the details of that, 'cause it's been quite some time.
So, in regards to the sewer, now that we now have the water and it's ours and it looks like that was a transaction that was done. And he says that we owe him funds based off of, you know, percentages. I mean, what exactly do we owe him? If we have not been paying him, then, you know, it seems like, why? I mean, why haven't we been paying him? This contract is tagged to things downstairs in the utility department. You know, when people connect, I mean, can we do some research and find out exactly what we owe him? Because if that ends up being considerably less than the value of the lift station, then, you know, there's a difference there that might, that we might be able to come to. But it just seems that we're just buying it because he wants to sell it. And I think that we have to look at the numbers first and make sure that we're not losing anything on our end and at the same time that he's not losing either. It has to be fair. But, you know, this is, this is like the fourth time this has come to us in the last couple of years and we're still in the same spot. Is there a way that we can find out exactly what it is that we owe him that he claims we owe? Because I've seen his purchase off of as well, is that, don't pay me what you owe me, just buy the lift station.
Yeah. I, I agree with you on that point too. I think we need to find out exactly what's the fair amount of money we owe one way or the other. And until somebody shows me or proves to me what we do owe him, I'm not ready to just give somebody money away without somebody verifying this is what we owe and this is what we should pay. I completely agree with Carl's valuation of the worth of it, but I still wanna make sure somebody proves to me that, you know, we owe this gentleman anything or whatever it may be, whatever, fair, to be fair for the city also. I want it to work.
Jerry, can you shed any light on that at this point?
Yeah, I, I, I think that, you know, if, if you can use the lift station, you know, to its reasonable capacity, you know, then you should consider purchasing it. But if, I don't know if anybody's connected to it that has not been paid. If some people have been connected to it, they haven't been paid, that, then you owe them some money. But I think what he misunderstands is he thinks that this amortization schedule here, it's an amortization schedule here, it's not. It's if, if somebody connects on, let's say, you know, if you look at the thing on a particular date to the left, then they owe, to the lift station, they owe a percentage of this wastewater cost of 173. And then, for each ERC and a percentage of the water, if they hook up to the water for each ERC, that's all I, how I understand it.
But that was until we bought the water. I mean, so we don't owe him anything up until the date that we bought the water, right?
Water part's gone, but now we're just talking wastewater instead of...
Okay.
There's the prices there. What he's done is each, each built in a percentage for administrative costs, so you have to pay for his cost for ERC plus a, his administration. So, that's why those are increasing. I think he thinks that, you know, we have to pay him that every month and we're, that's, that's never, nobody's ever gonna agree with that.
He provided this, the schedule, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so, so.
Well, the schedule is part of the contract. The 40% and all of that, those are exhibits of part of the contract, so that was mutually agreed upon. It's not coming after the fact.
It makes sense.
And that's an amendment to the original contract.
And it makes sense that it's attached, but it doesn't make sense the way he's interpreting it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it seems to me that the cleanest thing, if he's agreeable to it, is simply for us just to buy it at that price that Carl has suggested that it's worth and move on. That clears up all of the past history, that clears up any potential liabilities going forward and we're done with it.
I agree.
And I agree with, and, and if we, if, if there's any way possible, we can figure out if, if anyone has connected up to it, then paying that amount as well.
Well, the, the only people that are...
I'm sorry, who is this speaking?
This is Rick.
Hey, Rick.
I just wanna let you know right now, currently in his little development there, there is nobody that is using that lift station except for the city. Banyan Woods, the, that's our lift stations and, and the gas station that's using that lift station would be the only one outside of that development that is using it.
Okay.
So, we have a cocktail dress with no party to go to.
Yes.
You do.
Okay. Jerry, we're using middle things.
I had one other question for Rick. What are we hooking up in the future to this, to this lift station? I mean, the Nucor plant obviously is not hooked up to this, right?
No, ma'am, it is. It's not actually tied together and going to the gravity system where the old food line used to be.
Okay. So, is there a potential at any part that his lift station would be used in any future development of Avon Park that is off that Nucor line?
Absolutely, because that force main that runs out there, we could continue it on. At this time, you know, we have our own lift station that is running to that lift station. So, that's actually a master station to our other lift station.
You say the Two Roger, the Two Roger lift station?
Yes, ma'am, Banyan Woods, that lift station there that pumps into Lake Bird lift station. So, if we were to do away with it, we would have to run our own force main, the same right beside his, all the way down to Food Lion, to make that work, as well as for the assisted living place and the other place that is currently pumping into it. It's a place that he used to own that he sold right next door to.
And I guess that's where I've been confused. I didn't know that the Nucor lines were hooked into his utility lift station.
It's not. It's not, they just come together at the gravity line, there's a T right there. The two of them butt heads and drain into the gravity. They're not, Nucor doesn't flow through him, he doesn't flow through them. They just, they tee together to, at a gravity system.
So, that being the case, there would be no flow going through his lift station from Nucor, where he would say, you owe me all of Nucor's? Okay.
No, ma'am, totally different.
All right, so, so all growth north of Avon Park, that is not part of the Two Roger system and all this new stuff that we're installing will be standalone on its own without reliance on the Two Roger lift station?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
So, what's the possibility of other smaller, you know, uses for this particular lift station? Do you foresee it being needed for anything else? Other than that, other than his own development?
I would have to look at it to see, I mean, if, I, I believe some of the development north of it would utilize it, yes, would utilize the force main that's currently in the ground.
So, you're saying development?
No.
Say that again?
North of it, if there's any development that went on and put a lift station in north of it, they could run a new force main down to force main, to the existing force main of Two Rogers. That would be the only development that would be using this force main. But added to that lift station, I don't believe there would be anybody else that would be adding to it.
All right, Carl?
Yeah, yes, I'm, this is Carl. 14 years ago, the, the development was going in and he included a subdivision. And in order to have a subdivision there, there was not city water or city sewer available. So, he was required to put in a lift station and a force main and then required annex into the city. He did create a subdivision, he built the lift station, he built the force main. But what he didn't do, he did develop the lots. The lots are still vacant. This lift station was put in to supply sewage treatment for the lots that he still owns, but for some reason, never developed. So, there's very little flow. There's been some other city flow that's been brought into it, not, not Nucor. But the real intent of this lift station was to provide sewage treatment for the lots that he did create and he subdivided and he annexed them into the city. But for some reason, there's no homes on them, so it's...
That's why I said that, that's why I said that if you do buy it from him, make sure that you exclude the, the capacity for his subdivision, because you have to pay for its capacity still in that lift station and force main.
And anyone else on top of that subdivision as well?
Absolutely. Well, and that's, that's been my recommendation all along, that you should have an extension fee for the costs associated with putting in improvements and paying for improvements.
Carl, do you anticipate any future development utilizing that lift station, other than his subdivision?
Well, there could be some and if there's development north of that site, some of that. And then, if there are commercial developments south of there, from there down to Striker Road, they would be some commercial developments that might need to tie into that force main, which would then hopefully get annexed into the city and then have their sewage pumped on down south. So, there's a possibility that that, that force main could be used and the lift station. But the majority of the need for that lift station is for his subdivision. But the majority of the need for that lift station is for his subdivision.
Okay. Well...
So if he decides to sell the subdivision, then whoever comes in next and wants to develop it, they're going to have to pay the, the fees to hook into our system, right?
That's what I'm recommending, if you buy this.
We would in essence get our money back, kind of, right? In terms, if we were to sell this, then he would be able to, whoever buys it, would reimburse us.
That's right. And, uh, we need to make sure that he, he lets people know that that lift station's there, but that he's honest with them and tells them that, uh, that, that they're going to have to pay for using the lift station because it hasn't been paid for.
Okay.
So, Rick, I have a question for you. Um, we have water lines, do we not, that go westward on Striker to the Adventist Church, and then heading north on that road in front of the church that goes to a development that Bessetti and Associates were going to put in? Is this hooked into that?
No, ma'am, this is hooked in, no, ma'am, I, I can't tell you 100%, but I'm picturing in my head. I believe that the water line, actually, I'm, I'm pretty sure, I just don't want to tell you 100% positive. But it, that force main, uh, or the water main runs straight up 27 there. I believe it's a 10-inch that runs up, it's either eight or 10-inch, it runs up there. And it's a tap there that feeds that area that can develop. It does not, it does not come from, um, where you're thinking it is.
Okay, and then what about around Lake Bird? Uh, there's no sewer there, but there is water?
No.
No?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, there, there is, there is water, there's a sewer.
Okay. So would this have the possibility of providing sewer to the Lake Bird surrounding neighborhood that goes around that little lake?
Sure, they put in a, a little LPS lift station they can pump to the gravity system. They would have to run a line to, to the gravity system.
So we haven't had that request that you're aware of?
No, ma'am, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Well, I just want to have the confidence that whatever he has stated that, that we owe him doesn't come back and end up being another owing of anything if we were to buy this lift station. Um, it kind of bothers me that...
Have we even charged them for the maintenance and, and stuff that we've done for that station? I mean, we're out there twice checking the station, maintaining it, fixing anything that goes wrong with it. You know, maybe ragging the pumps and et cetera.
But was that part of the agreement, that we were going to maintain it? I mean, was that part of the deal of any kind?
Yes, but the deal was, we would own and maintain it. Not that we simply maintain his lift station for him and then have him charge us for pumping sewage to. It's just ludicrous.
So, Mr. Reed, are you, are you implying that by us maintaining it, he technically owes us money?
No, I don't know what the contract states, that'd be up to Jerry. But in my opinion, if we're maintaining, taking care of it, I don't see why he gets anything out of it.
Have we invested anything into it? I mean, have we upgraded or repaired or done anything to that lift station?
Yes, ma'am, we've changed controls and parts and components out and as they failed.
Okay. So we have maintained, not just, okay, we've, the parts, we've changed parts. Do you know what that cost is?
No, ma'am, I don't know off the top of my head. I could try to research, you know, uh, you know, records weren't kept too good. So I would have to try to research and what I could find out, uh...
And he may be aware of some of those, but I think there's a lot of variables here that kind of point in the direction that we may be overpaying for this. And, um, you know, looking a little bit deeper and see that we have been maintaining it, you know, unless there was a verbal agreement with someone in the past, we don't know that. But, um, I think that there are still some questions. I'm not ready to commit to this right now. We may end up doing it later, so maybe it's a hopeful situation for him. But it just seems that there's some dollar values that are missing on our end in terms of the ERCs and the percentages and all of that. And I, especially if we've been maintaining and changing parts, we could have been, you know, replaced some things in there that were valued in the tens of thousands, and we don't know that yet, right?
Right, and we've been maintaining, I, I do believe that he's in our SCADA system, so, you know, we've been maintaining it. So that means, you know, I've only been here 11 months, so I don't know what's happened in the past. But any time in the past before that, if we've gone out on, you know, a pump down, that's a rollout. You know, we're paying our guys to go out there and fix that station.
Yeah. You know, and to his benefit, I mean, he has, as far as I know, you know, kept insurance on it and all that, like it was required in the contract. I don't know that he's provided that information to the city, you know? Um, I think he's looking for a wash here, but I, like I said, I just, I, I appreciate Carl's input on this, but I think that we just need to do a little bit more homework before we commit to, to buying it.
But, but this is just for the construction, that's what the insurance is for. Then, he's not, I mean, we didn't ask him to insure the lift station, that's supposed to be our lift station. Not his.
Well, Jerry, what do you suggest that we do? What do you think is the best course of action for?
Well, I think that, you know, if you can utilize the lift station and the force main and purchase it for a fair price and be done with it, but then make sure that, you know, when they, that, uh, when that area is developed, is the subdivision, Lake Bird subdivision, pay their pro-rata share of our cost for, of the lift station.
Okay.
I agree with you, Jerry.
Well, how do we go forward and figure out what that fair price is? What exactly are we going to have to take into account as far as this contract goes and all that?
Well, the, the maintenance was in the contract, we were going to maintain it. It says we'll own and maintain it, basically. But the, the maintain part, we've been doing, the ownership thing, he's never turned it over to us. And so that should be done. But, I mean, you, this is all part of the, you know, if you want to go that route. But I think he's totally misread the contract, uh, either, you know, well, it's, I have no idea why he's read it the way he has, but there's no... It, it's a ludicrous amount that he's asking for the, uh, lift station, given all the considerations. But if we have a fair price, you establish a fair price to pay for it, and then, and you can use it, why not?
Well, wouldn't it be the ethical thing to do to have him look at the contract and really understand it correctly and make sure that he knows what he's getting into, rather than, you know, assuming that he doesn't or that he read something wrong? Maybe he just needs the opportunity to look at it? I mean, can we just direct the city attorney and the city manager to talk to him and kind of, by step, that way he knows exactly where he fits in this world? And, you know, go from there? I mean, I still like to see what it is that he claims we owe him. Um, I, I don't know that we owe a lot, but I, I don't know if that was for the water or the sewer, you know? There's just, like I said, too many variables to make a decision about it right now.
Well, why don't we just let the city manager and the, um, Kim have their meeting with him and, and, and get a good understanding what he, what, what we think that he don't understand? And then bring it back to us.
Yeah, and then there was just one last question. Were their covenants signed for all of those lots that are next to Lake Bird that he had projected to be hooked into the system, or the county or the city? Because there's a listing here of strap numbers, and they all have a C in front of them, which implies county. So if they're in the city, I mean, wouldn't we have a preference that if we negotiated something, that he annexes this property in?
So, I, I, I think, did you not, I thought there was even an annexation ordinance at one time, but...
That's what I thought.
I don't know.
I don't know, but if you look at the listing here, and it has a bunch of strap numbers on it, and they all look like they're, you know, consecutive, and they're all with a C in front of them. I haven't looked at the property advisor website to see if they are in the city or...
But they wouldn't be, and would they not be, um, considered as part of the annexation?
No. I don't know, were they contiguous? Did we, did we annex them in? I mean, they may not, you know, they're contiguous through the lake, right? But I don't know that we ever, I don't know. I, I, that's why I'm asking. I mean, I can go look it up on the computer, if you'll give me two minutes.
Well, obviously, we need to figure out a course of action and move on. So it sounds to me like the consensus seems to be that we want the city attorney, as well as city manager and Kim, to meet with Mr. Two Roger. Is that the consensus of the council?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that, because in the letter he turned back to us, he's basically looking for money for future use, uh, as well as the Nucor usage, which was just plain, that Nucor's not going to be used to it. So he's looking at something that he's envisioned as part of the process. He deserves money not only in the past, but money in the future, which, uh, if we buy the lift station and then, first of all, he shouldn't get anything in the future, and I'm not just here about anything in the past.
That's right.
Yeah, that's correct, I agree with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we're going to let Jerry...
One last question for Carl. Carl, do you know who constructed this lift station?
No, ma'am, I don't. I do, I do know that Chad St. Kilman designed it, and the plans were submitted, I'm sure, to the city and to the county, and it was a part of the development review process. But, uh, it was my understanding that the property was all going to be annexed into the city. But I, I don't know who built, who built it.
Okay.
Very good. Anything else?
Nope, I'm ready to move on.
Seeing nothing. Item number 11, airport loans update. Finance Director Dan.
Thank you. I was asked to provide some information about the three loans, um, that the airport currently owes to, two of them to, I believe, the general fund and one to the fund. And so I think I've, uh, provided that information. Uh, there was some question as to how we could owe, you know, basically, a, a large amount of, uh, principal, you know, if you multiply payment that by, you know, certain, by the number of payments. Uh, the current year payment for 2020 has not been made yet, that, that is due in July. So I, uh, if there are any questions, uh, I can try to answer them. But this is just, uh, basically an update report.
So I had a conversation, um, with Mr. Zamal Zach, am I correct?
That's correct.
Oh, right, thank you. So when we started looking at these loans, the premise of it was to see whether or not we can help the airport get back on its feet. And I had also requested, um, that staff look into the property that the utility has on the airport and see whether or not the utility can go ahead and pay rent, um, for that property at the airport, just like the utility has been charging the airport to mow it. So even though these are both city departments, um, it just seems that the airport will never catch up as long as we have the utility department, you know, mowing it and maintaining it and paying this long-term debt that's on there, the, the big one of 411,000, you know, sanitation expenses. Um, that's a bit of money, I don't know how far back that went. But it, it seems that it was just this, let's just grab all this money that the airport owes, and we're going to give them a loan from the sanitation department, and they're going to pay for it for all of these years, and it's just not going to ever allow the airport to get back on its feet. So I'd like to see which one of these loans can be removed. If they're not able to be removed, then can we go to the utility and tell them to pay for the last 20 years for having their department's utility building and office and everything else on this property to pay the airport? Um, and hopefully some way, figure out a way to balance out that loan without having any debt incurred. And that's kind of where I was going with this. Um, I know that we just took that 30,000 from the CARES Act, and it's going to be applied towards the, um, bank loan, which really isn't a bank loan anymore, it's a city loan. And it's going to leave a balance there of 31,000. But I, I'd really like to see the big ones. This, by the way, was something that the advisory board from the CRA were also looking at, because they look at this as, um, a hindrance to their progress in the development of the airport, because we have no money to market it, we have no money to improve it, um, unless we take out more loans. And if they're going to take out a loan, it should be to the benefit of the airport, not to the benefit of the sanitation department. So that's just my two cents. I don't know how we'll do that, but if it is feasible, it would be great to see that we can offset some of these expenses.
Okay, does anyone else have anything to add?
So because no one's adding anything, does that mean this whole conversation dies and nothing's going to get done, or what? How does that work?
Well, I mean, just in a dialogue here, I'm not sure that I'm seeing exactly what the loans were for precisely.
Well, the Resolution 1509, the 30-year term, it says it's an inter-fund transfer from the sanitation fund to continue conducting business of the airport while maintaining sanitation expenses, revenue, and rates.
Well, that's not hugely descriptive, is it?
No, but the resolution in and of itself should have a, a bit more information from whatever was on the council agenda that night, should have some description to it as well. You know, I would presume that the minutes from that night or the video of it would have some more info.
Right, but wasn't, wasn't that the point? It was to find out what they were for, to see if they were forgivable? Because if we don't know what it was for, you know, if the sanitation fund paid for, let's say, a building at the airport, how, how can you just forgive that? And why, why would you? How is that fair?
I don't think that they have paid for a building.
Well, I know, but I, I'm just giving you an example. There has, there has to be for something.
Right, so whether if it was for something, then if that's the case, and we're going to have different inter, uh, inter-fund transfers and things, then why not the inter-fund transfer of the utility paying the airport for the utility building there? That's been there for 15, 20 years. I mean, there's, you know, they haven't paid their rent.
Right, well, did, did the loans get given to the airport just to sustain their books? And just to sustain their...
I don't know. One of these was for a cleanup, um, that was tacked on to the airport. Um, you know, it, it was a cleanup that was incurred by them that was perpetrated by others. And, you know, the airport ended up having to pay for that. So is the airport going to be responsible for everything that happens on its property? If that's the case, then does that mean that anything that happens on the Main Street is going to be responsible by Main Street CRA? I mean, we spread, spread our money throughout the entire city. Why is it that the general fund can't be spread over at the airport? You know, why is it that the airport has to get a loan rather than having something paid for by general fund?
Yeah, well, right, and it ties into what is the long-term goal? Is, is the long-term goal to have it completely autonomous, to have it on its own? Or, you know, what is the goal?
Well, I don't know that...
That's something we haven't established.
No, and that, but it doesn't matter what they are in 20 years. What matters right now is the affordability of these loans. Look, I mean, we all know that they're, they're struggling. You know, if they don't have some activity out there where they're selling more fuel or building a building and bringing some industry there, then they're going to stay stuck exactly where they are right now. So we either make the commitment that we want our airport to be an industrial center, commercialization and all of that, or we're just going to keep on paying these loans and not grow, and just keep it closed, you know? Get a key and have them go in and clean it.
I'm not sure that's the only two options on the table. I'm not sure that that's the only way.
Well...
I, I, I don't see how we can honestly make a decision with the information that's in front of us.
No, but that's what I was asking. No one seems to want it to have any traction to see what we can do with it. That's why I said, by not discussing it any further, is that the sentiment of the council? And do you want to just keep it as it is? Or do you want staff to do more research?
Yeah, well, I mean, we need to identify what are the needs of the airport, you know? Is there a certain level of funding that they're needing per year? Is it 20,000? Is it 120,000? You know, what is it? Does it make more sense just to simply write a check or forgive these loans? I mean, there, there's 100 different ways to skin this cat, so...
Well, I don't think we need to make it complicated. Why can't we just see whether or not these loans are forgivable? Well, not, then, you know, are we going to be able to, uh, uh, collect from the utility for using the property at the airport vis-à-vis has the, you know, utility does at the airport already? You know, I think that those are compensable things that we can capture to help offset the fact that we barely have any money to run the airport with any management out there. I mean, my long-term goal is to have someone to be able to run it with an expertise and bringing more commercialization and economic development there. Um, I don't know why that wouldn't be a plan. As it is right now, you know, can we forgive any of these loans? You know, can we go on without having to, you know, continue with this large debt?
To find out if they're forgivable, isn't that purely a legal question?
I would think it is. It's an accounting question. You know, you have to have the money, right?
You're talking about the same agency, so, you know, your, your cost centers between your two, your cost centers, that's an accounting issue.
Okay. All right, so we need to find out from Dan, can he...
I thought the airport loans were on the, in the airport funds books. Um, I think, and again, I, I think this is more of a legal issue, and I'm not trying to punt, but it seems to me like, uh, the general fund could likely forgive, uh, their two debts. I don't know if the sanitation is allowed to do that or not, because they're their own on proprietary fund.
Okay.
So the next, the next legal question would be, would the airport be allowed to collect sanitation, um, use of the airport? And how far back could they do that?
You're asking me to chip from the hip on a question I, I wouldn't... This is a, I, I would just simply say here are the issues. I mean, as far as I can see, as long as there's not, as long as it's just between the different departments in the city as a basis, it's probably okay, except in the circumstances where their individual cost centers are, um, I forget what they call them, but they're, they're, uh, special, uh, accounts that are supposed to be kept, uh...
Separate funds.
Like your capacity fee funds are separate cost centers. You can't loan anything to other departments. You can't, you know, use it for anything other than rebuilding treatment plant and things like that. Those types of accounts are protected and they're protected in the code. I'm not aware of anything that protects, because we don't get capacity fees for that that I'm aware of.
It's not sanitation. I'm sorry, I, I used that term. I meant water.
Well, water, wastewater, they are their own separate cost centers. But there's nothing that I can think of that will keep them from paying for the cost of leasing property that they're using from another department, as long as they're not going into those capacity fees accounts, which are protected.
Okay. So it sounds to me like Jerry and Dan need to have a conversation at a certain point to hash out which of these three, if not all three, are forgivable. But furthermore, this is really and truly, it comes down to a budget of how much resources do we want to devote and how much do we not? So, you know.
And, and that's fine. I mean, we're getting ready to work on budget, so this is preliminary to that. I think it'll assist us in figuring out, you know, if we need two people out there. I mean, we're also trying to figure out how to run the airport at the airport rather than from some office in City Hall. I mean, that's been a problem all along and I think that this is a way to fix that. And if you all notice, I mean, all three of these loans came about at the same time, July of 2012, each and every one of them. One is entirely from the general fund to the airport fund. And then the other one is utility. And then the other one, by the way, the smaller one of the three, that one was for the big, big hangar that sits east of the property, of the airport property. That's what that loan is right there was for the huge hangar. So that's a hard cost, you know, capital improvement there. The other ones are cleanup and the other one was, you know, for mowing. So anyway, I, I, I just don't like that the airport is strapped down by these loans. And if they were able to have some of these funds for operating, marketing development, I think that we could lure some businesses here and maybe build some more hangars, who knows?
I, I have a comment if I may. I actually agree with the part that Maria says, I think we need to find a way to put the airport in the situation where financially they can grow. Because that seems to be the problem, that they've been stagnated, that they've been losing money. And I think that there's a lot we could do out there and without any money to hire actually somebody to manage it and come up with ideas to improve it, then I think that it's just going to continue to stay where it is and that's stagnant. And I think that that's sad because it's a, it's a large part of our, our city and should be one of the gems of our city to bring people in here to visit us. And I think that's something that could be done if they had the money and if they had the proper management. So I think that there's definitely, we need to find a way, if we could do, if we could forgive some of these loans, I would be for that.
Yeah. Well, in past conversations, we had talked about, you know, the future of the airport of having a FBO operator out there. And obviously, you need, need to, who is intimately involved in aviation, they need to understand what aviation is all about and how to grow an airport. I don't think there's anyone on staff currently that has all that skill sets, you know? So it's what level are we going to manage it? Are we going to babysit? Are we going to be proactive in developing it, you know? And if forgiving those loans would put us in a better position to have an FBO out there, then I'm all for it. But I, I just think that's the direction we should be going.
Well, my thought on, on the whole situation about the airport is just, I'm just not for taking any funds from any other department and putting it at the airport. You know, I'm, that's not, I can't, I can't see that because the, the airport thus far has only benefited a few, a handful of folks and not the entire city.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We have Mr. Everberry would like to speak?
Who?
Bill Everberry.
Yeah. Well, I agree with Ms. Gray. The airport should pay for itself.
And that's what we're trying to do is have it pay for itself.
No, it does, sounds like you're trying to get somebody else to pay for it.
Other departments, my thought on that, from the conversation that I'm hearing.
Well, it's the department, well, if we want the airport to pay for itself, then it should be charging rent to the departments that use it. You know, it's, it's.
Not the city. The city put it there.
Is there any other comments? At this point in time, the, the director and the city attorney will find out what loans are forgivable, if any, and we will have a future conversation. Is that agreeable to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Moving on to item number 12, the discussion of opening city parks.
Okay, I get my turn, huh?
Yes, sir.
I know there's one or two of you maybe a little upset, I am, I owned, didn't open it, but I honestly still do feel it's your choice to open these parks. It's kind of like, everybody thinks COVID-19 is gone and all you got to do is turn on the news and it isn't. Not a whole lot has changed on using parks. I'm not saying I'm for or against, I just believe it's five people, at least three of them need to make the choice. The county did open theirs last Wednesday. However, they, they made it, they, they put some signs up from what I read saying that they're not supplying anything for people to wash their hands or to make some soap in the, the restrooms and that they can't be more than 10 people and that. And actually, the, the C actually gave, is giving guidance on parks. And I've already talked to Robert, Robert already had in anticipation that, you know, you're going to move forward and open your parks. Mr. Washington already went around this morning, washed everything. He will be washing the restrooms every morning in, in all the parks. I talked to the town administrator down at Lake Placid today and reference something else will be coming up, but they opened their parks but didn't open their restrooms because people are stealing toilet paper. Which the CDC said, yeah, I thought it was pretty funny too, but I told them I was getting close, but I didn't think of doing that. The CDC recommends if your parks are open that you certainly have your restrooms open and make sure you have soap so people can wash their hands. They also recommend having hand sanitizer. What the county did is, is, on their signs they put up, I think they were just small ones that say bring your own hands sanitizer. And another thing is the social distancing. They recommend not letting, and I know I talked to the mayor about someone asking about organized sports, if they're doing any of that. They're actually against letting a bunch of people play basketball, baseball, soccer, football, all that. And again, like Robert and I talked, I don't know how we're going to stop many people from doing that. A lot of that's up, still up to a sheriff's office under the governor's executive order on more than 10 people hanging out. So I, I just wanted to bring those few things up, what we will be doing and assuming you're going to open the parks, we will make sure the restrooms are clean every morning, so it'll be once a day, but as far as like the equipment, the kids playing and that, the county put out, they wouldn't be doing that. There's no way that we can actually do that right now. So I just wanted you to know that before you take a vote.
So, so, this Brenda, so, so what you're saying, and I haven't, I wasn't on the county's call when they discussed this, so what you're saying is that they're precisely opening up for passive activities, like if they just want to go and sit at the park or, or something like that and not the playground and all the other good stuff? Hello?
Actually, I looked at their, have the kids playground open up, but they wanted the parents to know and basically just same as we'll do, put it on Facebook and the website, they just let the parents know if any of them go on, let the kids go on, that we are not cleaning, disinfecting, you know, where the kids are playing. They did, they did open that up.
Oh, they did? Okay.
Go ahead, Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
I did talk to Mark about this about 10, 12 days ago and, and I, I had a feeling that the, some of the cities in the county were going to open up the parks since I believe the governor gave it the okay to do that. I also believe that half the people think that we're in a very serious condition and I think half the people think it's not that bad. It's not for me to judge it. I think that's up to each individual to judge it. But I think the one thing that, the reason I am for opening up the parks, whether you got sanitation places there or not, is that it's open air and I think that we don't have a police department, so we'll have to leave it up to the people to police themselves until we find out that all of a sudden, you know, you got a group of 50 people, then we'll have to look at it then. But I think with the weather coming up and people being outdoors, I think it's something we should, I don't want to open up anything that's inside a building, but I think any outdoors, I think now, now's the time to do it. And I think that unless we see things change drastically, then I think it's okay with me and I'm for it.
Well, can I ask a question? If you end up having every parking spot at the park filled, then you're going to have quite a few people. And I have a family member that just got back from Anna Maria Island and what they're doing at home, they closed off every beach on, on the island except for the big public beach. And what they have are people driving up and they get a little card and they stick it in their window and it only allows them to be at the park for two hours. Now granted, you know, and then if they're not gone, their car gets towed. But if you have every parking lot filled up at that, at that park, you're going to, and up and down that little mini mall that's on the north end of it, you know, people park there illegally in that little median, you could have way too many people. Could we just section off every other parking spot? That way, people want to stay in their car, they can, which I doubt they would, but at least that way you can limit the number of people there. And if they can't find parking, then code enforcement would have to do something about it. I just don't want it to get out of control. If the beaches on, on the coast, you know, have barely any monitoring with the, with what they have in place, I could just see that happening here, you know? And then people won't leave, they'll be there all day long and stuff. But if we cut off every other parking spot, I think that you would be able to limit the number of people there. And then when one parking becomes available, the next person can come in.
Which park are you talking about? Donaldson?
Yes, particularly Donaldson Park because it's, you know, the one that has the most ample parking for it. Now, a lot of people walk to that park that live in, in the areas surrounding it, so you wouldn't be able to control that. But you could control the parking either, or close off one of the parking areas, you know, there's one that has a fence on it and you have the cones over there by the tennis courts and maybe phase it in to where you just have the main parking area filled. And then if it looks like that doesn't work or no one's coming, then open up the other one. But I think opening it all at once is just going to really draw everybody from Hardy County and Highlands County because Hardy County is famous and notorious for using Donaldson Park.
Well, I object to you doing that, but there's also the church parking lot to the west and I think that that's always open for the public to use. That's what they actually use for the tennis court. So if people want to get in there, they'll find a parking spot if they want to. And that's why I say, I, I think it could be a problem, but it's up to self policing. I know for one part of the park and there was 50 people all over that beachfront, Donaldson Park, I would turn around and go somewhere, I'd go back home. So I know we have responsibility to safety of the public, but the public also has responsibility for themselves.
Yeah, but you know, Jim, just like you made, I'm sorry, just like you made the comment about half the people don't worry about it and half of the people do, all the ones that don't worry about it would be the ones that go regardless of how much space is between them. So if, unless, you know, we're not going to have police officers there or law enforcement, you know, separating the crowd.
I'm not, I'm not interested in, in running a, a nanny town, you know?
No.
I think, I think that people can govern themselves and, you know, the people who are scared will stay home and people want to take that risk with their life will go. And I don't think it's our place to stand in the way.
By the same token, I, I think if it does get out of hand, now, I, I agree, you know, with the city manager that, you know, it's a legislative decision to make and the information he got actually is more than I had, I looked into it. But if you could ultimately, if you're going to approve opening the parks, you should give him the authority to close them again if it gets out of hand and, you know, it becomes a danger to the public.
Agreed.
I agree with that too. Like the, the big box stores, the Walmart's, the Home Depot's and so forth, once it got to be kind of crazy, they turn around and they limit how many people got into the stores. But since we went into phase one, I don't believe any of the big box stores are doing that now. They're letting people come in freely as many as they want. I can attest to that over the last weekend. So like you said, you see people half with masks, half without, you see employees with employees not. And so I think we got to leave it up to the people. I, I don't mind any restrictions that anybody comes up with, but I still think we should open it up and let people police themselves. Like I say, if you're in a dangerous situation, we're down in Iowa grocery store and there's 20 people standing right there and blocking your way, why would you walk up and stand next to them waiting for them to get out of the way? So, but I, I, I think we should open it. I'm ready for any restrictions anybody wants to put on there.
Well, I just want to say that Costco, even though they don't, they don't restrict people getting any more to my knowledge, they absolutely require that every person that enters has a mask because that happened to me. I left my mask in the car and I went to go in, they said, you can't go in without a mask. And they gave me one, the, you know, a cheap one, but anyway, I, I just throw that out there, you know, that it's up to you.
Another thing we have to do, Garrett, is, is, is look at, we have more than just Donaldson Park. Annie McWhite Park is a playground in, in, in the Southside neighborhood.
Right.
And that has to, would have to be governed. Then you have Lake Tulane and then you have the, the park out there at the baseball field.
And we have at least, at least a dozen parks, so.
It's, it's more so than just one park has to be considered. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I just don't think that, believe we have the resources to actually govern every group that goes out there and nor, nor should we. I, I just don't agree with it fundamentally. I think that we should allow the people to, to govern themselves.
I agree with you, Garrett. Especially being outdoors.
So I, I'm all in favor of opening up the parks. I'd be willing to make the motion that we open up the parks.
Well, if you made the motion, I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If, if, if something happened, and I'm for opening up the parks, don't get me wrong, I'm just trying to cover all angles. It's happened, let's say we open up the parks tomorrow and then on Friday, Annie McWhite Park got 100 people there, then we would have to have another meeting in order to, for the, for the city manager to close the parks?
No, I, I was going along with what the Jerry Bureau has suggested.
Yeah.
That the city manager would then have the ability to close them if, if things were out of hand.
Yeah, I agree.
So would that be a motion?
Can I add something?
Yes.
I, I think, and Jerry can correct me, just want to pull it out, but the, the emergency, local state of emergency allows me for, to, to do things for the health and safety. So I think that would probably be covered unless Jerry thinks differently, need a motion on it. I mean, what, what you're bringing up, the CDC also says you have, you have to be prepared for these large events and that. To me, a lot of it would be if there was, say, 100 people there and a deputy sheriff was called and they were few or whatever, at that point, I think probably once we got them out, we would close the park. So that's the only time.
And would that close that park or all the parks?
I think it'd be the park that people, i- i- if it was here, across where I'm looking at, the beautiful lake here, it would be that park. I don't think we would.
Okay. I just, I just want to be fair because see, I know how certain things go. Oh, we're going to close this one, but we're not going to close the other one. You know, I just want to be fair. That's all I'm saying.
I've been known to be pretty just and fair, so.
I know you have, but hey, I know the citizens of Avon Park too, so hey.
Yeah. Okay. So we have a motion. Is there any further questions?
And they'll all be closed at sundown and open up at sunrise, just like they always do?
Yeah.
Of course.
Yep.
Okay. Who was that?
Robert.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're going to open them with no limitations.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. I will get them open tomorrow morning then.
Well, we haven't voted yet.
I mean, talking about no limitations, I mean.
If things are out of hand, it's up to the discretion of the city manager. We have, we have a motion in a second.[1780.94] All right, we have a we have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing now, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
No.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Yeah, can you mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed, board of one.
Can I just simply say that, you know, I mean, it needs to be at least reasonably monitored.
Thank you.
With regard to the the restrictions that the governor still has in place, that you mentioned, the ten ten persons and so on, six feet separate.
And Jerry, I would agree that that it is. I mean, under the state of emergency, it is. I mean, we we were not we were not overruling the city manager in this instance. He was basically asking for our opinion.
Robert, just the parks will be open with no limitation and.
As in, as in, you're not going to place cones in every other parking spot? You're not going to put tape over different pieces of equipment, that sort of thing?
Oh, I thought you meant just not with no limitation, just open up everything, everything is.
The park always has limitations, Brenda, you know that.
No, you know, hold up here now. I'm just saying, saying.
I was clarifying it. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I want to know.
No dogs.
Unless they're on a leash.
And they don't have COVID.
No dogs in Donaldson Park is a sign.
Let me rephrase my question.
Thank you.
We're going to open the parks with no limitations under CDC rule.
Correct.
Thank you.
That makes more sense.
Okay, item number thirteen, CDBG mitigation grant. Is Corbett with us?
Yes, he is. One second, he's going to be right here to talk to you. In a in a moment, you can ask questions.
Good evening, councilmembers, citizens, Corbett Alday, once again to present to you and talk to you about the CDBG Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program, which we've mentioned before.
Yes, sir.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it just briefly to recap, CDBG mitigation is a one-time appropriation. It's never happened before, it may never happen again. It's a special program and there's three different categories of of applications that we can look at. And all of those, any any project that we do has to meet one of their criteria and mitigate future damages or risks. So that's the criteria of the program, and it has to benefit low to moderate income persons and the city town, if this D of Avon Park is is overall over fifty percent low to moderate income. So I I sent these to staff, I sent this as a summary, but I can I'll go over it with you now, we can talk about it. What we need, what we need to do is get some direction or input from the council to kind of narrow our focus for each category of grant. The first category is hardening. Hardening is for critical facilities. Hardening is for like the fire station, a hospital, a water plant, backup generators. It's for hardening. The project ideas that we're come up with for hardening were the fire station hardening. Apparently, it needs a roof, you could use windows, exterior work, garage doors, and so on. Pretty significant project. I would just look for you, for you, for council input on whether or not you think these projects or which of these projects is more of a priority for you. The community center was mentioned as hardening for a shelter space. I do not know if an architect or an engineer has looked at it to see if it could physically be hardened into a shelter space. There was also mention of a wastewater treatment plant backup generator. That might, we might actually be better off focusing on expansion of the of the treatment plant, because we're approaching eighty percent capacity. So we might be looking at under the under another category of grant, actual expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, include the generator and everything else that it needs. And then the recreation center was mentioned for hardening and backup standby generator. Questions or comments about those options or those ideas for a hardening grant?
I have some questions. So you have four items here, but we can apply for each one if we wanted to stick to just one, right?
You could apply for each of them, but you need to actually kind of focus a little bit if we can. For example, do we need to do the community center and a recreation center hardening backup generator? Do we need to do both or or is one more important than the other? Or is one really infeasible? Do we need to get an engineer out to look at the buildings? And then the wastewater treatment standby generator, do we need to focus on that? Or do we need to focus on the expansion of the plant and rework an electrical and just include the generator in that?
Corbett, do you need to pick some from each category or can we just focus on one category?
We can focus on one category at a time, because they're very different. You know, planning, planning is for planning, for master plans. And then the infrastructure is for, you know, new, large, significant retrofits or expansions or improvements, like expanding the wastewater. That would be interesting. Okay? So right now, not to confuse us, I'm focused on hardening, which is the first one is due.
And we and we do have an engineer who's going to go out and look at everything and see what 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 we need within, how it's all going to come together, because Carl has agreed to do that.
Okay.
And is the reason that we're looking at all four items because there's a timing issue? Or is it because, why why just four? I mean, we talked also at some point, I I at least I did, with Kim, you know, mitigation, parking across the street from the old church service center. There are possibilities of of combining this with other funds as well. So I mean, are you just sticking to four items because it's easy or because it's timed in terms line? And whoever ends up doing this has a lot of burden on their plate? I mean, I'd like to know that answer.
This, these are the ones that were mentioned that were appropriate for hardening. Hardening has to be to a critical facility. You don't harden stormwater, okay? Hardening is for hardening the hospital, fire station, police station, emergency shelter, the treatment water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant. It's hardening of a of a critical facility, one of those. So that's why a fire station, the fire station hardening just fits perfectly with this category. The community center or the recreation center could, if it is, actually, I think the recreation center uses a shelter already. I think I think that's correct. So does it need any better, especially if it's already used as a shelter? The standby generator at the wastewater treatment plant makes sense in this category. If we're not going to, if we're not going to try to expand that plant, we don't want to redo the, we want to have one generator designed for the for the plant, whatever it's going to be.
So I understood this grant to be where you can put it at any city-owned property. I mean, would the consideration ever be that we could use something for the roof at Classic Kaladium? I mean, it's not a critical infrastructure, but yet it does provide jobs and it has that level of of criticalness to it. Could we ever use it for that?
Say again, what would what would be?
We have a building that has that is in need of repair of its roof for years. It's been a problem with the city that we lease out to a business that provides jobs. So would that be something that could be hardened, the roof of the particular building that's at the airport?
No. No, that's not it. It's got to be one of those critical facilities. It's got to house emergency operation, emergency shelter, water plant, sewer plant, utilities or public works operations, the people that come out and move the the branches after a hurricane, for example, fire stations and police stations. The community center or the recreation center only makes sense if they're being used as a shelter.
Yeah, I I do like the idea of having backup generators, but I think from my point of view, the two important ones would be the fire station and the wastewater standby generator.
What about the, what about the the community, the, what is it called, the recreation center? The, well, we had extensive damage out there. And that that's used.
Yeah.
Shelter.
It's it's used as a shelter, the kitchen is inadequate, there's a big bubble at the top of the ceiling there that looks like there's water damage, but I don't know that it's been, you know, investigated. But, you know, it it leaks during the storm and it's a shelter.
Exactly, so that.
I would focus on the the fire station and the recreation center myself.
Yeah.
But Corbett, isn't it the case that you can apply for all four?
You could, you could.
Why not apply for all four?
Um, well. In all honesty, I I want to focus them, I want to get the projects that we submit funded. So I want to focus on what do we need the most? You know, we have a short window of timeframe to get something done and we need engineers to go out and look at these facilities and give me an intelligent scope of work and and a budget. So, you know, I don't want to be doing this, you know, you can't see me, but you know, I don't want to be going around in circles. I want to focus. So so for example, we could focus on the fire station and the recreation center and look at the community center if you want to. If you want to have the engineers look at it, see what it would take. But my my recommendation would be to focus on the fire station and the recreation center. And under infrastructure, look at expanding the wastewater treatment plant, put the generator on that.
All right, Carl, you still got your hand raised?
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Corbett, this is Carl Cool. How much money you are we talking about? Because I know it's not a fixed amount, you got to justify the dollars and cents, but I know you well, you you already have an idea as to how much money we could be talking about with with the fire station and the community center. Are we talking about a hundred thousand dollars apiece? Or because in some of these cases, we could spend three, four, five hundred thousand dollars.
I'm I'm guessing that the fire station hardening, once an engineer gets into it and finds out everything that needs to be brought up the code, it's going to be a half a million dollar project. And half a million dollars is eligible.
Is there is there an upper limit to the grant?
Fifteen million.
Is it that fifteen million per city or fifteen million per?
Per city, per city. So the total, the total of all these, pardon, go ahead. At least fifty thousand, right? No application can be less than fifty thousand dollars. And the the maximum from each city or county is is fifty. Now, that's just hardening. The others haven't come out yet.
Okay.
So you're saying it's fifteen, one, five million max for all projects combined when it comes to the?
Right, if you did all four of these, you couldn't ask for more than fifteen million dollars.
In the language of the D of the DEO, it says fifteen million per project. So are you saying that they changed that language to fifteen million all global? Because I mean, the the wastewater utility could be quite a chunk. I'm just wondering, I mean, if I'd go for the most expensive thing, that would be the biggest taxing item that would hit our our ratepayers. So I would go for the grant that would cover the biggest amount possible.
Okay, so this is, that's just for hardening. I don't have a limit yet for infrastructure, but infrastructure is where you're going to apply for expanding your treatment plant. And under that category, they they're based on the the way they talk, they want big projects. And they want, you know, we they want us to think big. But that's where I I'm thinking the wastewater treatment facility expansion and backup generator needs to go. It's under infrastructure, and it can be five million dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be a five million dollar application. And there is no, and I I forgot to say, there's no match requirement. Anything you do can help with points. Anything you spend, keep up with that, because it can help with points for you. But there's no match required and there's no requirement to have plans in spec. There's no no requirement for show already. You can you can only help yourself, the more you do, the more the better your application is going to look. But those things are not required.
Okay.
Only thing that's required is we got to have an intelligent scope of work and an intelligent budget and cost that we can defend, that we've, you know, got an engineer and architect who's actually looked at.
So am I reading this correctly, that the the hardening portion needs to be ready in four days?
We need, I have asked for maps and cost estimates and an opinion of of scope of work by the fifteenth of of May. I have asked for that so that we can start work on the application, yes. The application is due, the application is thirty.
Okay, Carl, do you do you believe that you can complete the scope of work on the hardening portion in the next four days?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we need to agree on the hardening portion. I suggest the fire station and the recreation center. Does anybody else have a differing opinion?
I agree with you.
Okay, anybody else?
I'll agree with that.
Okay, is anybody?
As long as we know that we can probably, I just, one, I mean, you're saying we'd still be able to get a generator for the wastewater treatment backup if we did the mitigation later on, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so I'm okay with the proposal so far.
Okay.
Do you want to do that in form of a motion on each one of these?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that under the hardening grants portion, we focus on the fire station hardening and recreation center hardening.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any questions?
Corbett, are you getting paid for this?
No, not at this time.
Okay, you're at risk.
I'm at risk right now.
Okay.
I do want to talk to you about running an RFP for services. But I didn't want, I wanted to get this important part done first.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions on the hardening?
Well, if you need it as a motion, then I guess we need to do that.
We we already made a motion in a second.
Okay.
We'll call the roll.
Okay, one second. Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Yeah, can you mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passing.
All right, Corbett, on the planning.
On the planning side, we have three master plans we're discussing, stormwater, wastewater and drinking water. A real master plan can be a half a million dollar budget item. I mean, a real master plan where lots of verification of utilities is done, modeling is done, and then future expansion of the of the of the systems are are planned. So I I I guess I'm looking for input from council on, do you really want all three of these? Or do do you have some master planning done already? What, where are you, where are you at with 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 master planning? Do you think you want a stormwater, a wastewater and drinking water master plan? Which conceivably each be half a million dollars.
Well, I can tell you the city needs a water and wastewater master plan badly.
Stormwater, or you said Jerry?
Wastewater.
Oh, wastewater.
Yep.
Would you?
Stormwater.
Jerry, you cut off, didn't hear what you said.
Yeah, I was saying that the city needs a potable water and a wastewater master plan badly. Would you not agree, Carl?
This is Carl. I absolutely agree with that. And I can tell you that a master plan easily can cost a half a million dollars. I know that right now at the Sebring Airport Authority, we have a master plan move and it's a half a million dollars.
But that's just the engineering and the studies, right? It's not the actual infrastructure improvement.
No, it's not. That's correct, that's correct. That's the the investigation and the studying and putting together the plan and and working with the neighbors, all that put together and doing a long-range plan that the that the agencies are going to review and approve. I know of one that I'm involved with, and that one is over a half a million dollars.
Is that wastewater or drinking water, Carl?
No, what I'm talking about is the Sebring Airport Authority. But wastewater and stormwater, you can easily, you can spend a half a million dollars also on those plans, identifying everything that could needs to be improved. But I agree with Jerry, the city. Uh, but I agree with Jerry. The City of Avon Park needs a a long range master plan for water supply, potable water supply and wastewater and stormwater.
And here, and guys, you you'll save money on it. I'm not going to say you're going to get your money back. But the money you save when, I'm not wanting wasteful lines or, you know, having somebody upsize a list station for no reason. You know, all that stuff goes away when you have a master plan. You simply know what to tell them that they need to put in uh, that area.
Yep.
And uh, you know, it's it's much easier to to predict. And uh, so in the long run, you're not wasting money.
Well, Corbett, do you, do you foresee?
Of course. There are some other organizations out there that were contemplating getting some of these funds, but they would have to get the permission from the city since we are the government entity that would be their mothership, so to speak, because they're inside the city limits. Um, they would not require, I mean, if we find to do that, there still would be sufficient funding left if they wanted to do a hardening program, for example, and and turn uh, another building into a shelter. Um, would you think that they would be competing with us if you say the maximum is fifteen million and so far for the planning of A and D, the recreation and fire station hardening, they would be eligible to apply, would they not?
Through you. Uh, only a city or county can apply. That's a, a, won't be a uh, local government, a unit of local government, excuse me.
But I listened to the webinar from the DEO and they specifically said that nonprofit organizations that are within a municipality or government area can apply as long as the, as the government itself says, yeah, it's okay. We wouldn't pay for it. They they would get the funding, but we just have to be the ones that approve it. Um.
Wouldn't they have to go through us?
Yeah, they would have to go through us in in terms of they'd be competing with us. But if there's fifteen million dollars max, like you're saying, for the X ten possible projects, um, you know, and we did A and D and both of those will not be more than fifteen million, then it is affordable for someone else to do a project in there. I'm just asking, you know, are, is the city um, going to allow um, nonprofit entities to be able to benefit from these funds because they themselves have issues with with hardening?
That's up to you. That's a policy decision. If you know you have nonprofits in the community that that want to apply, they do have to come to you and go through you. And it is, the way it was explained to me is that the city applies on their behalf, not.
Yeah, I mean, we could apply on their behalf. They would have to get their their ducks in a row to get the proposal to us. And, you know, we could apply for them. I do include other organizations out there that have buildings that are in disrepair that provide a service to our community that is, um, you know, that no one else can.
Do you think that they can do that in the time requirement?
Well, I think they are aware of it. I've spoken to at least one entity that has um, interest in doing it. They they kind of backed off because of the COVID and kind of figured, well, they wouldn't have a chance because there's a timing issue and no one's at their office. But nonetheless, um, they provide a service to all the handicap people for practically Highlands County. So um, anyway, if they're interested in doing it, I'd like for them, if, you know, someone can reach out to them and say, yeah, let's let's do this and we'll allow that. But obviously, they need to come in and and do that with us, but they'd have to do that quick. I think they are aware of that.
I just think that the city's priorities are obviously number one, and any outside agencies would come second. And we wouldn't want to do anything to jeopardize uh, our our grant.
And the nonprofits also have to pay for their own preliminary, um, you know, application and engineering type stuff. Is that correct? Or would the set, would that have to come through the city?
I don't know how that would work, Corbett, but let me ask you this. If they did their thing and three submittals were put in and they scored higher on their one project and we lost the third one because of it, we would have the authority to say, you know what, even though you got funded, we did, we want our money more. So sorry, but we're going to bump you down to three. We have that authority to do that. But I think that, you know, we should allow other entities to be able to participate in this if if they have the, you know, they're providing a service that we can't.
Well, it sounds to me, it sounds to me like you have a specific project in mind. And so I would just simply ask you, you know, if you're familiar with the project, how far along is it and can they get it done in time?
They probably could. It's it's no larger than the recreation center.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I thought you said for the heart, it was for city on buildings? So we don't, that would not come into a play?
It would have to go.
That'd be a question for Corbett.
It has to be a critical facility. So it could, could be a fire station that the county owns that happens to be in the city of Avon Park. Okay? It could be, could be a sheriff's control station that's in the city of Avon Park that the county own. But it doesn't have to be city owned. It just has to be a critical facility. A a homeless shelter would be a critical facility if it was in the city. If it was in the city and owned by a nonprofit, a nonprofit can apply through the city.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. I just, I wrote my notes wrong, Dan.
Basically, basically, they're coming to you, asking you to make it a city project. Would you make it a city project? Here's, here's our numbers. Here's our evaluation of our building and what we need. And all of those costs and responsibilities would be on them.
Yeah.
So can they?
And I think they would assume that responsibility. I don't think that they're expecting us to do all that for them. As, all they want us to be is just a connection to the funding.
Okay.
But we won't have to do anything unless they reach out first. So as it stands right now, you know, it's it's up to them to pursue it.
Very good.
Mayor, can I add something?
Yes.
We had, Kim was dealing with, I think we may be talking about the same ones, just on what you said, but Kim, who was the one to reach out for us that I had you give them a call Friday? And I don't know if they got back with you or not.
Uh, they have, they have not gotten back with me. Um, I can't, I can't remember her name right off the top of my head because I didn't talk to her. I left.
Hi. Hi, guys. This is Kathleen Border with Ridge Area Arc. My hand is raised in the Zoom. It was me.
Ah.
Ma'am.
I've been listening, but I didn't want to interrupt.
Yes, ma'am. You have a project for us?
Yes, I do. So um, Maria was kind of alluding to uh, the project that I would love for you guys to consider. Our adult day training building is a metal building. We've already reached out to um, an engineer to find out the costs of evaluating uh, win rating on that and generators. We service over a hundred families of people with um, developmental and intellectual disabilities. So for them, they're not well served in a generic shelter. We would love to be able to uh, shelter them at that building, but of course, we would need hardening.
Okay, and you're talking about only in in cases of a a emergency like a hurricane or something like that?
Correct. Any sort of disaster type situation.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Well, I mean, obviously, uh, if you've been listening, then you know what the time constraints are. Um, so it'll be up to you guys if you can get it in in time, but certainly, I don't see why any of us would be opposed to uh, to looking at it.
I appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything else on hardening? We need to move on to the other two.
I just have one more question in regards to Kathleen Border. If they opt to do this, does she need to submit a letter according to how the rules work, Corbett? Does she need to submit a letter of intent that they're going to be doing this? Or could we make a motion tonight and say we will allow them to participate in this program with us pending them getting their their other paperwork in order? I mean, I don't have the timeframe.
That letter of um, intent, that was my holdup to be formally on the agenda. My board chair signed it and I sent it to Mr. Schrader on Friday.
Okay.
Okay.
So you could amend your motion to include, uh, what's, what's the name of the project this episode? What's, what's the name of the project?
It would be Ridge Area Arc Adult Day Training Facility.
And you want to uh, improve the existing building to be a shelter for the disabled?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do we have a motion for that?
I make the motion to amend the uh, the motion with the name of the Ridge Area, A R C. Is that what we called it?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and allow them the, uh, allow them the ability to have the city facilitate the grant for them.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Southern?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passion unanimous?
Okay. On the planning grants, we've heard from our engineer and our city attorney that all three are probably very much needed. Corbett, is there any issue with applying for all three?
No. Um, if I could add one thing to the hardening grant, uh, while we have the contact on the, on the Zoom.
Yes, sir.
You please need the engineering, scope of work, and an opinion of cost and pictures, and a location map, which can be just a Google PDF of a Google map. But we need all that uh, by the fifteenth if we can get it.
Very good. Corbett?
And your answer is no, there's no penalty for applying for all three. It's just that that's a, that's, I would, I would, I would budget a half a million for each one.
Okay.
If you don't have any, a budget attached to it, I agree with Carl.
So we're planning, these are dollars that will go towards the actual planning. So we'd have engineering and all that. Um, are you aware of any future funding that would actually allow us to do the work?
Uh, CDB, regular CDBG, um, state revolving fund, um, uh, back in the USDA. I can think of several.
So you don't foresee any um, infrastructure construction dollars coming down next year that would, you know, facilitate these jobs? We'd have to apply for existing grants?
Existing grants, existing programs.
Okay.
Okay. Well, if there's no one, go ahead.
Go ahead. I do encourage you to look at the state revolving fund program down the road. I don't think the city has taken advantage of that and has used um, capital funds, uh, utilities, when I have seen interest rate loans of thirty years at zero interest rate out of that program. So uh, just on the note on that, on the infrastructure funding, I would look at that in the future rather than using that capital fund.
Very good. Well, I I personally support that uh, we should apply for all three of the master plans. If anyone's willing to make a motion, I'm open to it.
I move that we, I move that we um, apply for the mass water, wastewater and drinking water master plan for the mitigation grant and the planning.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further questions?
Carl?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I I don't have a question on the grants. I I have a, a question for Corbett under the infrastructure in a moment.
Okay. All right. We have a motion in a second. If there's no further questions, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Southern?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passion unanimous?
So.
And while we're on this subject, Mr. Mayor, can we add to the agenda the RFP for consulting services to draft the applications for these um, grants? Or at least, if he's doing these at risk, then um, allow for an RFP to go ahead and and bid out the um, consultant to monitor it once the funding comes.
We will add it to the end.
Okay.
All right. Under infrastructure, Carl, you had a question for Corbett?
Yes, I do. Corbett, the city has identified some major uh, needs in their wastewater treatment facilities. I mean, in their, in their uh, lift stations and sewer systems. Uh, is, you think it would be okay that we could apply for grants to improve those, even though we're going to uh, in the grants area, be, be to plan?
Um, the plan, the master plan would be its own project. It would compete on its own. And and the infrastructure project to expand the wastewater treatment facility would 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 not even compete with it. It would compete against other infrastructure projects across the state. So you could have both of them. If that's your.
Okay.
You could have both of them going and uh, there are three separate app- applications, so.
So I would just let the council know that your consulting engineer, Kim Lee Horn, has, is under contract to look at your uh, in- infrastructure of your wastewater treatment system, uh, pumping stations, lift stations and all, and their report in draft form. And I believe it is very, it would be very, a very competitive uh, uh, program to submit as a grant application under the infrastructure grants. Because it's, it's a very well identified need right now.
I agree.
I agree. Is it more than the wastewater treatment plan itself?
The, we're in the, we're in the neighborhood of two million dollars.
Two million dollars, okay.
So are you saying we missed this item number three on this info?
No, I'm sure to for sure, apply for the wastewater treatment facility grant.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Well, let's look at all of it first and.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's four items there. Is that what you're talking about?
Right.
Okay.
Corbett, if you'll take us through those items.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Um, the first one, Dave Citrus Retention Pond, possibly other retention ponds. I uh, I understand there are some localized flooding problems within the city. Um, but and so there may be other ponds that we need to talk about. Um, wastewater treatment facility expansion is just that. I was, I was informed that the plant was gearing, would be nearing eighty percent capacity, which is permit capacity that figures the requirement to start designing and the planning for the expansion of the plant. It's supposed to go over eighty percent. So that, so that, in that, we would wrap in there redoing the electrical and a backup standby generator, of course. We will do one project to save money. Uh, I am seeing as a demolition of unsafe structures. Was there a question put to me? I put the question to the state and they said they might be eligible. So when they said they might be eligible, it looks like I'd have to send them a specific project. I don't think just demo- demolishing will be acceptable. I think if if we're demolishing unsafe structures in in uh, in a eligible project, I think they would consider it. And then D, you can scratch D off the list. Unfortunately, since I did this, I got to answer back to them. It says, no, they will not do relocation of utilities underground because there's a special regulation, special requirement in the regulations for this CDBG mitigation program that excludes us working on private utilities. So we couldn't work, do any work on private utility, just to re, even though we're just relocating it up.
Question if I could, please, uh.
Yes, sir.
Jerry Buer, um, that eighty percent, if whoever told you that is on, you know, this, this call, could, is, does that include Nucor? Or is that based on flows that we have now?
Uh, I think that would be based on post Nucor.
All right.
If I'm speaking correctly.
Uh, well, I'd be in a panic if you weren't.
No, no, post Nucor. And.
And then wouldn't that number, wouldn't that be available through Kim Lee Horn's um, current evaluation of the utility on that part of town anyway? To see exactly what that is? Because that's going to be part of the Nucor contract anyway?
No, that, that's, that's only, they've only analyzed your downstream
solid.
collection system. And uh, I don't believe, they did a headwork study. That was with regard to metals and things like that, impacts on the plant. I don't think that they did a, a capacity study of your wastewater treatment plant. So whoever gave that information probably had permitting uh, flows and things like that. And that's what they based it on. Plus, Nucor's anticipate flows.
Well, I will say that eighty percent is some, is a number that has been thrown out since two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. Um, if anything bigger came, so uh, Nucor's here and I think they are the bigger one. So I don't know if if that is an accurate number or not. Uh, that's the number that I've heard, that we are going to be at eighty with Nucor there.
I I would suggest that somebody needs to find that out pretty badly. Uh, because I, it, it, it's a critical thing because if you get up to ninety percent, you have to be under construction. And uh, I would think that uh, if it's not, Nucor's not included, it's probably going to put you up to ninety percent.
Okay.
Very good. I can speak, I can speak a little bit on that. This is Derek Larmour with Nucor again. Uh, looking at the draft report that Kim Lee Horn sent the other day, you guys are permitted at one point five million gallons per day. And before we start to discharge to you guys, you're at point eight. So on average, we're sending you guys, so after we start discharging you guys on an average day, you're going to be about a million gallons out of one point five million gallons per day. So on average, we're sending you guys. So after we start discharging you guys on an average day, you're going to be about a million gallons at a one point five million gallons per day.
Good.
Usually the capacity is based on a three-month rolling average, ADF.
What does that mean?
That means they take a three-month period and they look at the average.
In terms of it, I mean, so we just really have to get that percentage and see whether or not we really truly are eighty. What is the threshold? Seventy, eighty, ninety?
Yeah, I appreciate what Eric's saying, but I think somebody needs to pin that down so we can keep our eye on it.
Okay. So we're trying to decide which infrastructure grants we want to go for. Is there anything standing in our way on any of A, B, or C? And Corbett, do you see an issue with applying for all three, A, B, and C?
C is is uncertain. C has to be, right now, I think would have to be part of a eligible project. But we'll see as as as.
Okay, well, on C, if it was part of a project where we were tearing down a building and putting in a park?
Okay, so parks are not eligible. Parks
Okay.
by themselves, parks, things like parks, parking lots, sidewalks, by themselves aren't eligible because they don't mitigate anything.
Okay.
If you were if you were getting rid of some unsafe structures where people were in danger and you were going to turn that into a parking lot, you could ask, I would say that's awesome. All they can say is no.
Okay.
But but right now, you've got to have a mitigation component.
Okay.
The parks and recreation and generally sidewalks don't meet those criteria.
All right, so for items A and B, and then adding in all of the lift stations that Carl was discussing, is that seem agreeable to the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, if I'm not hearing any opposition, I'll make a motion that we go for items. What's that? Maria?
No.
No, I said yes. Maybe I said.
Okay. Okay, so items, does anyone want to make a motion to accept items A and B with adding in the lift stations discussed by Carl Cool?
So move.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan? Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Okay.
If I could just ask, you know, if Carl's design Carl's list, you know, that David Citrus Citrus Retention Pond, possibly other retention pond. We just need some information on that. I don't know if there's more than one pond we need to be talking about or what.
Okay. Corbett, do you have anything else?
RFP for mitigation grant administration. We please, we prefer to be hired to do the administration, obviously upfront, because that's, you know, we don't make money off of applications. We can charge a cost for the application cost if you think you are not interested in going forward with RFP at this time. But it's kind of, we cannot, if we're not hired, we need to get paid to do the application. But if we're hired, then that then we're working towards the grant administration. So that's how we that's how we typically do things.
Okay.
This is Jerry.
I don't make money off of applications. We're talking like two thousand dollars per application.
Right.
You know, just have our costs.
Jerry, what were you saying?
Yeah, I was just saying that ultimately, most of these grants, they require that I give an opinion that the procurement of all the services used on the for the grant project have been properly procured. And so the sooner you get that accomplished, the better it is, in my opinion. Make sure.
You agree with getting the RFP put out?
Yes.
Okay.
You just answered an RFP for CDBG mitigation, or we are answering the RFP. I can send that to you from a different level of government. You could at least have a scope of services to look at from them, for example.
Okay. All right, so you're suggesting that we make a motion to put out an RFP for the administration of the grant?
Yes, please.
Okay. Does anyone want willing to make that motion?
I move that we put out RSP for the mitigation grant process.
Administration.
But to administer the CDBG grants?
Right.
To administer the CDBG grant?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Really, realistically, it would be both write it and grant and and because they they usually throw the writing in, do they not?
I'm sorry?
There's a writing not always included with the administration?
Typically, yes.
Okay, so I just make it clear that it's both writing and administering.
So I move that we do a RF for the writing and the administration of the CDBG mitigation grant.
Okay, do we have a second? I'll second it. The so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions?
Carl's.
Okay.
Maria can't hear.
You can't hear.
Okay.
Okay.
Carl, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to talk to the council about the RFP that includes writing the grant. When you look at the deadlines that's facing you in order to get the grant in and you issue an RFP, what you don't want to be doing is going through the RFP advertising process while the grant deadline is going by missing. Honestly, you don't have time to have an RFP for writing the grant application. You do have time and the money is in the grant administration. I know that Corbett does this business for a long time and there is got to be trust in the way these things work. But if you wait until you go through the RFP process and go through that, all that, and then you have somebody start writing the grant, you probably will miss these deadlines in front of you. And I would suggest that you we that you the council, and I believe there's ways to figure out what would be fair to the council and fair to Corbett to have the grants applied for, but issue the RFP for the grant administration and writing, because I don't think you have time to do that.
No, that's a good point then. Then in which case you still have an obligation, if you're going to pay him for the grant writing, to do verbal quotations or written quotations, depending on how much it costs. Corbett, how much would it cost you to, how much would you charge to do the the grant writing?
Thirty-five hundred each for our cost, please.
Okay, so you'd need to get your written quotations for that. Is that is that right on the or Ken? I don't have the procurement policy up.
No.
Yeah, it'd be written quotes.
Yeah, because the total is going to come to. Yeah.
Look, five.
Well, there's different timeframes for each application. So you have out until August, for example. There's plenty of time for an RFP, you know, to run now and be done by August for the infrastructure program. I don't know about the master plans. They're going to be out next week and then due the end of July, I think.
So we're talking about six applications for those categories, all the way?
Yes.
So that would be what, ten thousand five hundred each?
No, three five hundred, thirty-five hundred each.
For each application?
Right, just our cost.
Isn't there three applications per category?
There's three, yes, there's three applications right now per category.
So that would be ten thousand five hundred for each category, right?
Yes, nine, three thousand, yes.
So it's twenty-one thousand dollars, so yes.
Yeah, there's there's five total.
Yeah, five.
There's two in the first and three in the second.
Well, disability.
And two in the bottom one.
That's true. That's true for the ARC. Yeah, I was added in.
But that was on them.
Anything over twenty, we have to.
Is it twenty or twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so yes, you can do the written quotes.
So the twenty, it's it's a total of seven applications, right?
With the last, with the, yeah, but right now, we're just talking about the first two categories, not.
Okay, all right.
You can do the first three and go ahead and run your RFP and then see how far you get. We have another month for the planning grant, so.
So so then the RFP would be for writing and administration?
Yes, the one that I the one that we're answering now includes both writing and administration. So that's a good example.
So we're talking about during ten thousand five hundred then now for the applications because we're not counting the planning part?
We would do a work, we do a work order proposal for fire station hardening, recreation center hardening, and a disability shelter, RDR. And.
That one. Which are.
Okay, now, wouldn't the ARC be responsible for paying their portion?
They should, and I think they are aware of that.
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to put a question mark on that one, assuming that they can get it into you in time and assuming that they're willing to pay the fee. But obviously.
Unless they can apply for it on their own, they might be able to word on their own. I, you know, you guys are coming in and out. It's like hit or miss, and there's like frozen videos on some of you, but not all of you. So I don't know if it's my phone, but are you saying that that we would? Since I missed most of the conversation, it's two projects that we're doing under the hardening. Is that right?
Three.
There's two that we're paying for, one that the ARC is paying for.
Okay, but in terms of Corbett's services, he would only be working on two for the city in the hardening category.
Correct.
So, you know, if you're looking at looking at thresholds, why not just carve it out and say, you know, program for hardening at seven thousand? That falls under, and then if you do the second one, that could be, you know, A, B, and C of the planning of the mitigation, that's three of them, that's ten thousand five hundred, that's under the threshold. We don't have to add them all up tonight and make one lump sum. We can carve this out in three separate sections. Because they're three separate grants, three separate categories.
Jerry, do you see a problem?
I'm sorry, I lost you again.
I thought that's what we were doing.
Okay, Jerry, do you see a problem with that?
I don't see a problem with that if it's if there are three different projects.
Okay.
Totally different grants.
There's three different programs, not three different projects.
Yeah.
Programs and and six different applications. They all have to be standalone on their own.
Okay.
So. And you have you have
Does anyone?
You have more time with planning, so, you know, you could, we could.
So should we just go ahead and pay the seven thousand for the grocery project?
Probably, because because if you're if you're paying for it, then there's no, it removes the appearance of obligation to, you know, quote unquote, to get the work.
Okay.
Guardian, you see what I'm saying? So.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion and a second for putting out an RFP. And what we need to do is amend that motion to only put on RFP for infrastructure grants. Right?
No, you're going to you're going to need administration for anything that gets funded.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right. So we can proceed with the RFP and then we'll have another accept thirty-five hundred dollar charge for each of the the hardening application grants.
Right.
Right, okay. All right, so we have a motion.
And if the time runs, we can come back to you with another proposal. We can come back to you at another meeting because we have more time.
Okay. Very good, very good. So we have a motion and a second for the RFP. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Now.
That's all I need.
For the for the writing of the grant, we need to we need to do a motion for that, for the writing of the hardening portions.
For the applications submitted from Corbett, you mean?
For for the applications, yes.
You you mean to engage us for thirty-five hundred dollars per application?
Correct.
Can you repeat that? It was muffled.
To engage us, the motion would be to engage Guardian for thirty-five hundred dollars per application under hardening.
Is there a so moved?
Yes, so.
Wait, no, when you say engage, you mean you're you're going to have to do the procurement, right? I mean, on that, it's verbal quotations for one to five thousand dollars.
For one to five, yeah, but this is going to be seven.
Yeah, so and that's going to be written, then if it's a seven.
Correct.
Says that at least three written actions will be obtained. I'm looking at the procurement policy.
Okay.
So how do we move forward, Jerry? What's the easiest way out is?
Just authorize the the city clerk to get written quotations, three written quotations. And told her to you'll probably have to do a special meeting to get the approval. But we need.
Why can't we make a motion right now to go around our procurement policy? Because there's no way we're going to be able to do that in four days.
No, all right.
Go ahead.
Okay. What would that motion be like, Jerry?
That would be an emergency procurement.
Emergency procurement is right.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yeah, yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay. Are we good, Jerry?
Yeah, it looks like it's good under paragraph seven.
Corbett, do you have anything else?
No, I don't unless you have questions for me.
Okay, Corbett, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item number fourteen, Lake Placid request for garbage cans.
Okay, I don't know if you had a chance to read the letter or not. Town manager's asking basically that we furnish them to them free, not paying for it. They they take all the labor to come and pick them up. I, some questions that you had last time we talked about, the number we have in hand is about four hundred. The number we have at residence, yes, is two thousand, because we really don't have any records on, we're run over, thrown away, stolen, whatever, so that's a rough estimate. There's been about eighteen hundred recycled. The average cost, because there's three different sizes, is forty-one dollars. The total number purchased we found is four, four thousand six hundred and twenty-five. They're in twenty twelve and then some in twenty fourteen when Lake came on. And a total of one hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. We're recycling them. We're getting about two dollars and seventy-six cents a can, because again, you got three sizes. If we recycle the remaining amount, twenty-four hundred cans, if my math is right, it's about six thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars. However, we take labor to do that because I talked to Robert, he has to take them apart, removing any metal, has to prep them, has to load them. My recommendation, for what it's worth, is we give these to the city of Lake Placid, they pick them up. And my thought is, there probably going to come a time, myself or someone sitting in my seat might need something for Lake Placid, and they'll help us out.
As long as it's only for the proxy four hundred on hand, I'm okay with that.
I agree. I don't think we should expend our our time and money in trying to collect them.
Yeah.
Let's give it to them.
Terrible. I mean, I don't I don't, I didn't catch about what half everybody said, but I didn't get any of the math, so. Oh, what are the classes?
You have to repeat that question.
Are we going to get, are we giving it to them?
That, that's the proposal right now, is giving it to them.
But just the four hundred on hand. Not, we're not gonna go spend money like the mayor said, looking for the rest. I understand that, why, why would we not sell them what we have on hand, what we were selling them to before when we were calling them as scrap?
Well, because we had to, it, it cost us money for the staff to prepare them for scrap. They had to take them apart and taking the, the metal rods out and the wheels off and all that.
You're gone, you're gone, you're cutting in and out, that's fine, whatever we're gonna do, I'm.
Okay.
And can I add something?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's like walk through and get, and try to get it out of it, that's what I've got a lot of.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, that's okay, that's okay.
I know you're saying, you, you saying that for, about the four hundred on hand, but I, I'd have to ask Robert on how many they pick up because they're sitting out. I know we're not going looking for them, but are there some on a weekly basis you pick up when they're sitting out there?
Uh, whenever we get a call or work order to go pick them up, we go pick them up. We, we average three or four a week.
Yeah, so, I mean, it would be my intention, just as we get them, to make them available for pickup.
Yeah. So Robert, let me ask you a question, I'm sorry, this Brendan, the two, the two thousand, that's still not the number that is still at the resident, do we know what area those two thousand are at?
All over town.
All over, yeah.
They're all over town.
Yeah, I've seen them all over.
There any other questions on it?
No, give it to them.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we, uh, donate, uh, four hundred cans that we have on hand, recyclable cans to the city of Lake Placid at no charge, and they will come pick them up.
And any that we pick up on an ongoing basis?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion, or a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bernard?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
I think you lost her.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
I hear, I see a message on my screen that says you lost me, but I don't know what you're talking about.
We're voting on donating the, uh, the waste cans to Lake Placid for free, we have four hundred on hand, so the motion was to donate those four hundred for free, and any that we pick up on an ongoing basis.
I got like every other word in there, so, um, it sounded like we're gonna go ahead and give these things to Lake Placid, and they're still gonna pick them up, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Okay.
Ashley Mannan, and Mr. Attaberry has been having his hand up.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, does this mean that we'll never be recycling again in Avon Park?
If the price of recycling is still at zero, then yes, if the price of recycling goes up to what it once was, then we have a future in recycling.
Oh, then we buy new cans, right?
Possibly at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Item number fifteen, financial assistance for COVID nineteen, Maria.
Boy.
Okay, I think I just, are we on the next item?
Yes, item number fifteen, it's you.
Okay, I don't know why, it's like some of you come in, some of you don't, and it's frozen half the time, Stanley speaks, but he, his, his lips don't move, so I don't know what's going on. Is it my phone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Getting everything.
Yep.
Okay, I'm in a bunker. Just kidding, anyway. Um, I was, um, I had asked, this was part of the stimulus to go back to the residents and businesses, trying to figure out the amount of funding that we would have available to them. The maps depict, obviously, the CRA districts and stuff, so I don't know what, um, how far Kim was able to get with the information regarding how many businesses we have in the CRA, if we're right, the CRA that are still all inside the city. So because that info's not here, um, and I know that I won't be able to hear your responses, as long as there's no further info in here, I think we still need to look at how much money is available for stimulus in terms of the utility reduction for our residents and the utility reduction for our businesses. So if someone can tell me what the status is of that, of the, of the info, so that we can discuss this further. Obviously, it's a finance thing as well, because they need to have a, um, idea of how much money they're gonna be.
Correct.
Stimulating the utility, so.
I have not given this information, I've been, um, on the phone with, um, the property appraiser, I have sent this gentleman that works there three emails, and I've asked for how many cities are, um, how many businesses are in the city CRAs. I get absolutely no response, not even a, I don't know, or we'll check, I get nothing. And then, um, the people working here in the city can't seem to do anything but give me all of the businesses, and they're unable to separate them, so I'm really struggling with this, but I, you know, I'm, I'm prepared to keep moving forward with it, but yes, it does need to be probably, extended out, but I, I wanted to put it down here, because I don't know how long you want it extended out, or if you do, or if it's even feasible, so, I don't know.
Well, a comment I have on this is we have to, uh, extend it outside the CRA as long as it's within the city limits, because if you're still a taxpayer paying for water and sewer, then you was, if you're gonna get, give money to the citizens, you have to give, or businesses, you have to give it to all of them that are basically, uh, taxpayers and water and sewer payers, which are, they're not all in the CRA.
No, they're not all in the CRAs, a lot of the businesses are on highway twenty-seven or not in the CRA, the conversation we had at the last meeting was everyone that had an occupational license would be paying this, um, everyone inside, well. Yeah, inside the city limits, not just because they have water and sewer, you gotta remember, our, our ratepayers not only pay county tax, they also pay city tax. So this was a stimulus for the, uh, occupational license holders and residents of the city of Avon Park.
We have since found out that the CRA is not legal for the CRA to, uh, give the money to the businesses, so we're taking that off the table.
Um, where did you hear that information?
The finance director had checked into it.
Okay, I'd like to see that in writing, because I called the FRA and they told me that it was okay, and their attorneys had checked with it them, so, you know, if that's a new, um, um.
Mandate.
New factor, you know, something that has to be considered, then, okay, um. Okay.
Can Dan, Merrick, I speak?
Yes.
Dan, can you, um, come in on that, because what, what, he left me a little note the other day, was after talking to Jim LaRue, CRA use of funds for stimulus water payments require a plan amendment. Am I right, Dan?
That's correct, um, the CRA, uh, plan would have to be amended to include this, um, he had questioned some of our other expenditures, uh, that we were reporting, and he went back and looked at the plan, and sure enough, they were allowable. Um, I was a little bit concerned about, uh, again, I'll call it co-mingling of funds, or, um, that this could be what he termed a slippery slope, um, as people tried to basically, uh, not, that we're trying to, it's, it's obviously with good intention. Um, but he said currently, um, as the CRA plans are written, those with, that re, that stimulus money would not qualify, uh, for expenses of the CRA. I can, uh, put that in writing for me.
Dan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, let me ask you a question, is there, is there any provision, and I don't remember, in our CRA, in, in our, in our CRA plan for emergency funds expenditures at all, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing, you're saying we don't have one.
The emergency part, I, that was never discussed, so I can't answer to that.
Oh, okay. But if, could it, if it was used in the phraseology that this is a grant program, which we do currently have, and that is in the plan, would that not qualify as a grant? Just asking.
I've been, I've been muting myself in and out, so then, um, I grabbed the wrong mouse to unmute myself, uh, that again, I'll ask him. Um, I'm not that, you know, I'm not familiar with the CRA plans, why I asked our consultant.
Well, I guess it comes down to if we really wanna do this, we could always amend the plan if that's the case, that's not a big deal, you know, amending can be done, what is it, by ordinance, right?
Right.
So, you know, I guess the thing to do is to find out whether or not, if we know we can, then that's, that's a given, and so it's figuring out how much we could afford through the utility to do so, and, I mean, I don't wanna spin our wheels and say, okay, let's go ahead and do a plan amendment, not knowing how much money will be available, you know, they both, they both go hand in hand. The individuals I spoke to at the FRA had stated that because we give a grant program for infrastructure, that this would, it's still a grant program. Um, I don't think it's defined in our plan what kind of grants we give. So I don't know there, I know that you cannot give it to the residences, that's, that's totally separate, but the businesses sounded like it was a, a, it was okay. Anyway, moving from there, if we really wanna do this, you know, obviously, it would be more expensive to go outside of city limits, I focused only on the inside because they're the ones that pay city and county tax, whereas the outside don't. The ones inside are compliant to our codes and our ordinances, whereas the ones on the outside are not, so to me, there is a difference between the two.
Exactly.
So, you know, I'd like to take care of our residents, those are the ones that elected us, not the ones that are outside. So, uh, at the end of the day, they're the ones that pay our fire assessment, not the ones that are outside, so I think the benefit goes to the ones that have an occupational body. And, I mean, I can go on for numerous reasons why I would favor our citizens and our businesses more so than anyone outside, so if they like it, they can annex in. But in the meantime, i- if we know that there are dollars available, um, non-CRA money, because we don't, we do know that some of these businesses are not in those districts, you know, how much money would be available there? And in the meantime, you know, I mean, I, I spoke to Kim about getting the list, I can do a public records request to the county, and I don't know how they would deny me that if I was requesting the info that she's been seeking.
Yeah, can, I mean, can I just say that I, I think it's, I mean, effort, and I understand what you're trying to do, and, I mean, it's a good thing. I just think that the downside is so much larger than the upside, you know, the.
Yeah, but, yeah, okay, well, we know that, and we came up with some funding, um, that we know is out there right now that has not been spent, and by the way, two sections of funding that weren't even considered in the lump sum amounts that were provided, I think, three weeks, uh, three meetings ago, you know, there are more funds in there, so, you know, I think that here we are getting ready to apply for some hardening grants, um, we're getting ready to do some other things, and it seems as though if we can get some of these grants, that might be, uh, might help us as well, but, you know, I don't know about you. Every business I talk to would absolutely enjoy, um, a reprieve from the debt that they are currently carrying, where they could not get a loan for anything.
But who would?
I think we're all.
No, no business will, will ever not want that, no.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and make it voluntary, maybe some people don't want it, you know, but at the end of the day, I think that we need to have an effort, if we can show that we can't afford it, then we can't afford it, but just to say, you know, that's a valiant effort, and let's just do away with the whole thought, I don't think that's enough, I think we need to do everything we can to help our citizens and our businesses.
Well, not everybody's gonna get it, for one, it's gonna be a, a pretty small group of people that do get it, you know, compared to the amount of residents that are there. So, you know, in essence, you're gonna be way more people angry than you're making happy.
I don't understand that comment, what do you mean by that?
Well, you're talking about giving money to the businesses, correct?
Uh, businesses and residents.
And residents.
Yeah, we talked about twenty dollars off for maybe two to three months per resident off of their utility bill. At the end of the day, that's sixty dollars, um, over the course of three months, that can be credited to their account, and then with the businesses, it's, we didn't know what the amount would be, because we were waiting to see about how much would, would be available, but no, it would be for every living soul that has a account with the city, so if you're a resident, it's the resident account. If you're a business, it's the business account, it doesn't go by the number of people in the city, it's based off of the actual account numbers with the utility billing department.
Yeah, well, I mean, it sounds, it, it sounds great, you know, I just don't think the effect of it is, is worth the downside.
What's the downside?
Well, the downside is that, I mean, you, you proclaim that this money is unspent and that it has no use, but that's just, could not be further from the truth. I mean, the money abs, absolutely, it will in the future, and if you're pushing this up against possibly raising taxes, I, I just, you know, you're gonna give it to them now to take it away later, it, it seems foolish.
Well, we don't know that, we don't know what the numbers are, I mean, we're just saying no to something because we're blindly, uh, pretending as, look, there's, there's, there are fundings that are out there, we have some funding that's set aside for construction of stuff that we're not gonna build. You know, there are other funds in there, you got leftover money from the buyback program, there are several funds in there that are remnants of expenditures that already took place, that, that money will not be encumbered for anything else.
Well, I think, I think that stimulus works great whenever you have a money machine that you can print as many dollars as you want, like, but, but, you know, Avon Park doesn't have that. That's not the way our, our economy works.
Well, I, I don't wanna give up just blatantly on the fact that you don't like the program because you're afraid that, you know, you won't come up with the money, I wanna show that we don't have the money before we make that decision. You know, I, let's see what we have, I think it's helpful, and we all know that there were some discrepancies in the previous budget, um, where some things were budgeted twice, and we had to fix some of those in amendments, and those went into the general, I'm sorry, into the reserves, so, you know, there are some areas in there, maybe it won't be sixty dollars per resident, maybe it'll be dollars per account for three months, but.
But the, the issue is, you're not gonna, you're not gonna really know how much money you have until budget time.
I think she's working off of the budget that we're coming to have, Gary.
But what good does that do you in the face of the new budget that everybody is expecting to be much higher?
I'm not expecting that.
Every estimate that we've gotten is it's gonna be higher. We have positions that have never been filled that are now filled, we have construction that we have to do, we have lots of projects coming up, I mean.
And look at the prod, I mean, if you wanna go, you know, point by point in the budget, there are some construction things in there that absolutely will not get done this year. So, you know, we don't have anyone to oversee and project manage some of those things, so, you know, what you're saying is, let's just not look at it, let's not bother.
No, that's not, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying a, a good deal of time and, and effort has, has already, and I just think that even if, even if you were successful, you know, I'm not a educated economist here, but, you know, neither is anybody else sitting at this table, and, you know, I don't see how the sixty dollars is going to, you know, have a great impact on the economy versus what it would do for the city's projects going forward. That is the premise of what we are, we take a small amount, a small fee from every resident in order to do the projects that collectively we need to do. So running that in reverse, I mean, it seems idiotic to me.
Okay, I, I, I get your sentiment, that's perfectly fine, um, if you think it's an idiotic thing to do to serve our community in a way that they've never been served before.
Well, you're, you're twisting, you're twisting the words into something that it's not, that's exactly what you're doing.
Those are your words, your words.
Well, you're, you're trying to, you're trying to run the city in reverse, you're basically.
No, it's not, we're, no, no, we're, what we're doing is helping out those individuals that are currently, look, I'm not gonna go into an argument with you, because I know you like to do that, Jerry.
I think you've already done.
We made, we made a decision three meetings ago to look into this, I don't know how much work is done, done by staff, um, she's, Kim says that she's been on the times and gotten nowhere with them. I can call and I can get a public record and bring the information to council, if it facilitates time for staff not to have to do that, I'll take that responsibility.
One comment if I could, please, but I interrupt for a second.
Go ahead.
I understand what you're saying, Maria, and to be honest with you, I, I'm basically for it also, but then let's not look at the fact that we just turned around and we raised our fire assessment for this year's budget, so basically, if we do this, we're. So basically, if we do this, we're sort of giving the people back some of the money that we just increased the fire assessment for. So that's another. As well as the fact, if you do want to look at who would qualify, why wouldn't you go to the tax rolls to see which businesses, cities are, hey, you know, Avon Park City Tax, that would qualify them if you want to do that. But I, I do think that you both have valid points. The fact is that we turned around and we increased our fire assessment, what was it, about thirty, forty dollars? And for the year, and you're going to turn around and basically give it back to them. So that's a point to look at also.
Well, fire assessment, you know, talking about different funds, I think, is kind of, you know, muddying the waters. Let's not forget that the reason why we raised the fire assessment was to pay for a brush truck, which ended up being that they didn't want. Look, we either want to do this or not. Do we want to get the numbers or not? Do we want to validate to ourselves that we can afford it or that we cannot afford it? You know, knowing that we don't have a lot of projects this year, we haven't had a manager over at Public Works now, and we probably won't for another couple of months, you know, do we want to do this or not? So, you know, what it sounds like is you don't want to pursue it. I would like to pursue it. I thought we had set this train in motion, and now you're backing out of that. So is that your motion to back out of this whole project and investigating what we have available?
I think that if we have money, we, if we have extra money at the end of the year when it comes to budget time, then we can simply lower the taxes going forward or have an excess. But until you get there, you do not know if you have an excess. So to do it halfway, midstream, I understand if it's to take care of this current pandemic, right? If you, you call it a stimulus, which the whole purpose of a stimulus is in the face of some type of a pandemic. But I don't think that the city can do enough to, to make that kind of a difference. I don't think that we should get in the business of, of getting into the stimulus business. If the federal government wants to do that, which they have done, that's fine. That, that's not us.
Okay, that's your opinion.
That's fine. That's all it is, an opinion.
I'll just say one thing, Garrett.
Yes, sir.
I'll probably be cut off like everybody else cuts off. But, but I'm not going to be conditioned for higher taxes right now. I can tell you right now. I'm, I mean, I was, I finally went along with a fire assessment that was for a brush truck. It was not ever supposed to be used for salaries. And that's what we're going to end up using, that fire assessment for salaries, just like Brenda said we would. And, and everybody said, oh, no, 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 that's where they're going to go. I just want to make that point. So the next time you want to come around and increase the fire assessment, just remember that.
All right. So as far as going forward, is, what information is needed and how do we collect it?
I, may I say something, Garrett? I think that we had at our last meeting, or the last couple of meetings, we did decide to, to give the residents a, a stimulus for three months, two or three months. And the point is, what Kim, from my understanding, was supposed to be, is the total number of businesses within the city limits of Avon Park, and come up with a figure that we could give them a credit on their water bill as well. That was my understanding. So, and, and I don't know why we couldn't use the occupational license to pull that out. And we know our boundaries within the city limits. If I got a business at four oh eight Brush Street, and that is outside of the city limits, that, that business would not qualify. I mean, what's so hard about that to me?
I was told to get the businesses that were inside the CRA districts, and I can't get any clarification on where the CRA boundaries are. And the city, the businesses that are inside the city limits, I got a whole list, a stack of the businesses, and some of them say outside the city limits. I don't know if some of these are just registered subcontractors, if they're really businesses or not. It's, it's just going to take more.
Oh, okay, so.
I don't mind doing it. It's just, it's just going to take me a while. But I can't get anything clear from the property appraisers office either because that's where I, where I was originally trying. So this is what, you know, what I'm left to. But no, I, I can, I can get this. It's just going to take me more time, and I just need direction as to if you're, if you want me to move forward with it or what, what we're going to do.
Okay, so I heard, I heard one portion of it that was saying that we could not use CRA dollars. Is that correct?
There's uncertainty there. You can if you change your plan.
That needs to be flushed out, correct?
We know that you can if you change your plan. And what I was saying was that, at the end of the day, if it's treated as a grant, like all the other grants in the CRA, then it would be eligible. So there may be a play on words. I know that the plans were designed to be a little bit nebulous so that you could fit different things in there. So it's just the interpretation of that. So, you know, but again, if it doesn't allow it, then you change the plan. It's a modification. We amend things all the time. So let's find out if, if there is funding, and if there isn't, then, you know, if there is sufficient, whether it be two months, three months, you know, it doesn't, we're not looking for a thousand dollars per businesses, but, you know, it would be, I think it would be great to, that we invest in the community that invests in us.
I think it's, it's disingenuous to make the argument that this is investing in the community.
Oh, my God. Okay.
I don't, I don't think that that is a correct characterization of what this is.
Well, again, you know, you have a very conservative approach of not giving anything out to anybody, and I get that, but.
My approach is don't take it in the first place if you didn't have a use for it. And if you do have a use for it, then use it what it was intended for. And if you don't, then don't take it next time.
Things change. We have to be able to be flexible and change when the environment changes.
It's your opinion.
I suggest.
All right, so do we, do we have a way forward to get this information or what? I heard that we, we, we can get the, okay, so you're going to call Kim and try to flush it out with her?
Yeah, if that's okay with the rest of the council, I'd like to pursue that. I, I, I feel that I can help her get the information off the computer, just sitting at my desk here at the house.
I think that would be fine.
All right. Very good. Moving on, item number sixteen. Resolution twenty twenty dash oh five, highway lighting maintenance. Mark, is this you? Or, no, this is city attorney. Jerry, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Just trying to pull a resolution right now. I can read it. Sorry, I fell asleep.
Understandable.
I see how.
I can read it.
Okay.
All right. Resolution number twenty twenty dash five. Resolution of the City of Avon Park, Florida, authorizing the city manager to sign a twenty twenty state highway lighting maintenance and compensation agreement and providing an effective date.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so basically, I asked to review this for, it's a DOT, a pretty standard agreement. The lighting, we do one every year. Seems, so, so the, that's, so I recommend approval.
Yeah, I move that we approve.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty dash oh five, highway lightning.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion of second for resolution twenty twenty dash oh five. Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Member Bernard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sproth.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes. Okay. Item number seventeen, Classic Cladium's insurance.
Yeah, I looked at the Classic Cladium contract, the lease. If, you know, it's not the most clear thing in the world, but, here's what, paragraph seven, it says, the tenant will maintain fire and casualty insurance on structures located on the premises at their full replacement value. That means they're supposed to have those improvements insured, not us. I mean, we haven't, everything, we haven't insured already, but we're not primary. Then if you look at paragraph nine, it says, the tenant will get prompt notice to the landlord if damage to the premises caused by fire or other casualty is such as not the fault of the landlord, then the tenant will be fully, and if it's fully covered by insurance, which tenant is obligated to maintain, the tenant shall repair with due diligence. And then I look at, I, I, I sent you, I sent the, the person we've been dealing with over there at Classic Cladiums, the one over there, a email. Her name is Rebecca Wright, I think it is. And, and she's, I, I asked her, I said, you know, basically, be polite. It looks to me like you're supposed to be insured us. And, you know, you guys, you guys are going to be talking about it tonight. And so I, I asked her to go ahead and attend, you know, and she sent me back an email saying, "Couldn't attend and be prepared that soon." But I, I told Kim, "Believe it on the agenda because you'd ask me to look at this." So, you know, just bear in mind that they, they do want to make a statement about it in some way. But I've given you what I, what I think about it. I'd like to hear from them or their attorney, the legal argument as to why they shouldn't be paying for these improvements with their own insurance, not ours.
Okay. So where do we go from here, Jerry?
I'd wait until they respond, and then I'll bring it up on the next agenda, probably.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on this?
No.
Okay. Moving on to city manager report. Mark, what do you got?
A few things here. I'll go quickly since nine. Just some follow-ups from last, last week, or two weeks ago. It has mat material testing for the old fire station, the Wild Building, are going to be conducted this Friday the fifteenth. After the results are back, the bid may have to be tweaked by Jerry to what they find, and then we'll get out the bid, both of them. An update on the Housing Authority Playground. I know everybody feels, and I do too, this probably should be done, but they had asked us to get the, a survey done. Our, our attorney is working for us. And when we got it done, when it got sent in, it, there was a survey done back in twenty sixteen, as you know, when the roadway was turned over to the city, and they're overlapping each other. So we got back with our surveyor, and he's working on getting that. So it's only going to show what, nothing to do with what we already have. So hopefully, within a week or so, he'll get that done. The, the address, the Parker House at three two two East Hale McCray. I received all the property insurance from the, the company that's going to do the demolish it. He is going to get with code enforcement in the morning because per the contract, rightfully so, we go out, make sure he knows the right place he's going to demolish. So he's going to start doing that this week.
Oh, great.
Well, I knew I was going to hopefully get it great there. The job announcement for our Public Works Director, Director of Public Works, we received a total of thirteen applications back. None of them met our prerequisites of the master's degree or, there was only one with any experience in grant writing, and he had a high school diploma. So it's my request that you let us tweak that to put a bachelor's degree in, taking out the masters and see what we get back that way. Because we are in desperate need of a director of public works. Amen.
When was that supposed? Or was it open for Phil?
Oh, I'm sorry. David, are you still on?
Yeah, I am. Can I answer? That job posting with the amendment from the last council meeting was posted on April twenty second, and it closed on the night of May seven.
I, I wouldn't mind we adjusted it to prefer masters, but we accept BA with a minimum of, let's say, five or ten years' experience.
What is your suggestion on the amount of experience needed?
David, do you have that in front of you?
The previous job announcement, Mark and I had talked about, and we wanted a minimum of four years of field experience and two years of supervisor experience. And again, that was a minimum. And so like he had mentioned, of the thirteen candidates that we had, only three of them had previous public works experience, and only two of them had previous manager experience while in public works. But again, both candidates had absolutely no college. They were the people that started in public works, worked their way up and, and into different positions, and then eventually became directors.
And my, my recommendation, Mayor Senior Ask, would change the bachelor's in civil engineering, public works engineering related field, and leave the four years related professional experience with two years supervisor experience. And most of them that I went in and looked at before we posted this to brought it to you, it's probably twenty different ones, and I know David did too. That's about what most of them are asking for, three, four, or five years' experience, but all asking for some supervisor experience.
So what was the degree in again? Any degree?
No, the bachelor's, we're still speaking with the bachelor's in engineering. So we're just changing it from the previous post that said masters in engineering, just change it to bachelor's. That's the only change that's, change that's going to be in the job advertisement.
Makes sense.
I don't see any problem with.
Sounds good to me.
I'm good.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, you had a motion to establish the qualifications, so you need to make a motion to change it.
We make a motion to change the qualifications to what city manager has suggested?
I do, Brenda. I also move, I move that we qualifications from a master's degree to a bachelor's degree for the public works director.
In engineering.
Engineering. What?
In engineering. I was just going to throw that in there.
All right. And again, just to clarify, the previous job announcement that came out in education experience, the only word being changed in there, everything else stands as is, is master, the bachelor's, just like you said, Brenda.
Can I, can I step in for a second?
Yes.
I wouldn't make that just engineering. I would make it civil or sanitary or engineering.
We, we have civil engineering, public works engineering, or related engineering field. That's good.
That's good.
So. Is that your motion, Brenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there, okay, we have a motion. So go ahead, Maria.
In terms of the pay, does that mean that the, because we had it set up for a master's in engineering, does this mean that the pay scale is going to drop?
I would recommend leaving it seventy to eighty.
Do you have another suggestion, Maria?
Oh, you know, sixty-five to eighty.
Does anybody else agree?
Mark, let me ask you a question. The other descriptions that the, that, that you looked at before, what was their starting pay?
Well, the starting and the tops are different, but we would be one of the lower ones that I've looked at, if not one of the lowest, and David can chime in because he's looked at a lot of them too.
Okay.
David?
We've been.
Job applications, I mean, when you search the internet for bachelor's in engineering at public works, the majority of the jobs start in the mid-upper seventies, even with just a bachelor's degree, and go well into the low one hundreds, even as deputy directors. And, and these are some cities that. And and these are some cities that the position, their populace is is fourteen, fifteen thousand people.
I would, uh, just Jerry, I I would lowball it because you get what you pay for.
Exactly. I think I I would, I would rather the the salary remain as is.
Okay. Would you explain to me the difference between an engineer and a civil engineer?
Uh, it's just different, different uh areas of engineering. Civil engineering is just broadly uh, roads, streets, sewers, water. And uh sanitary engineers strictly water and sewer, drainage, that sort of thing. And then the public works is the whole gamut of the book, like civil engineering, basically.
I I got nothing on what you said.
I was saying, civil engineering is generally public works and um, uh, I would, in fact, I would think that public works and civil engineering are pretty much the same thing. They accept that they do railroads and things like that as well.
Any sign off on engineering papers?
Oh, yeah. If they got a PE in the state of Florida, yeah, you don't necessarily need a PE, you know, your public works. But I guess I would, I would inquire as to why they didn't get a PE. Because generally speaking, if you get the degree, then you're gonna want the the uh professional certification as well. Just my, my point of view.
Okay.
Jerry, does the PE typically come with a master's? Or, I mean, you don't really get PE, but just a general um bachelor's. It's typically with a master's, right?
Well, I think that they probably get it, get the PE easier, but I don't think that you're required to have it. It's just, it's a five-year program now anyway. So, you know, you call it a master's or or a bachelor's. I, I think that, I don't think that you need a master's in order to get a PE.
No, you don't. Most of them that are advertised, again, on Indeed, because you can see across the United States, the ones that ask for a PE are only asking for a bachelor's degree. I have not found one yet, David did neither, where they're requiring anybody to have a master's in engineering. Uh, there's some of the bigger places that prefer it, but um, so.
And again, when you start talking about finding a candidate that has their PE certificate, you're gonna be paying about a hundred and twenty thousand plus to a hundred and seventy thousand, depending on the size of the city. And I don't know that that's what we wanna pay.
No, we weren't looking for a PE. I just wanted the, the best one in math that's available out there.
Right, okay.
Well, we have a motion in a second on the table. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bernard.
Yes.
Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Sol, Sutherland.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spurlock.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Mark, what else you got?
Um, thank you. And Kim has just one more thing because she was the one that was doing it, so I said she has to talk. Go ahead.
Florida, Florida Rural Water is um going to be doing our water and wastewater impact fee study. Um, they're doing it as a membership benefit. Um, the cost is going to be four thousand two hundred and fifty, and that's a contribution in aid of engineering assistance. Whereas if we were to get to hire a regular company um that does this, um, I know from past experience where I came from that it could be twenty to forty-five thousand dollars. So, forty-two hundred dollars is, or forty-two hundred and fifty is a great price, and they are going to do it. They, they are already getting it started, so just wanted to let you know.
Very good. Anything else?
I don't have anything else, no.
Is there anything else to bring for the good of the city?
I I just wanna say I I Googled this uh Board of, Board of Professional Engineers, and it says you need, all you need is a four-year degree. And you have to take an FE exam before you take your PE exam. And so, the answer to a master's degree is no.
Okay. If there's nothing else for the good of the city, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.